Twenty twenty four. Everybody's enjoying the rain. So today's agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and they may be pulled or removed at the end at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. The Board of Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Our meeting today may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Today's roll call, we have all Commissioners in chambers. And today's invocation will be given by John Poundstone of Joy Church. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we've come before you this morning most humbly, and we just want to take a moment to reflect on the awesome privilege it is to join yeah, to join together and have you join us.
Mr. Poundstone, hold on. We're trying to get you some sound here.
All right. Thank you.
Try that.
Go ahead and try that.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing.
We can hear you.
All right. Well, once again, Heavenly Father, we come before you most humbly. Just want to take a moment to reflect on the awesome privilege it is to gather the public and our government in the public square. We thank you for your presence. Father, this morning, we ask you for your divine guidance, wisdom, and clarity over this morning's proceedings. I especially wish to pray for our clerk recorder, Stacy Lindberg, and her team and her poll workers and her judges as a, as they navigate this upcoming election in these extremely confusing, sometimes conflicting times. We have a sense, Father, of the integrity and how seriously they take this. We thank you for them. And again, we ask your guidance and protection and coverage over them. Father, bless us as we convene with you this morning in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Hey, first public participation of the day. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each app, agenda, action, item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment? Okay, sir.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning.
Got great information, Fire. I just wanted to give a quick update on Miller and Ayazi. We're coming up on one year since you guys approved the speed limit change and the stop signs. And we've had one car wreck in one year. We're going quit from one car wreck every two years at that intersection. And because of the actions you guys took, we've down to one in one year. So just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item five for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Any Commissioners, any input? Public input. Seeing none. I'll look for a motion.
A move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. But we'll come to our first time certain. Time certain today at nine AM for presentation only. Report and update from Smith Valley Fire Chief Matthew Nightengale, along with other Lyon County Fire Districts on lithium battery fire preparedness. So Chief. And Captain Honeywell.
Matt Nightengale, Smith Valley Fire. We were asked to do kind of a presentation on battery fires. I myself am no, you know, expert in this, taking some classes, YouTube, research on the internet and so. But if we're gonna get too sticky with it, we'll call some electrical engineers and stuff like that to do. But yeah, myself, Captain Frank Honeywell, be great for G fun from Fort Lyon are here. Maybe we can answer some of the questions. One of the one question I had for Commissioner Henderson was kind of more what you were looking for with this, this presentation. So we can try to.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. Really, I think what I'm looking for is reassurance for the board and also for the citizens that you guys have a plan. Because there's been, you know, more and more of these fires recently. And one down in Nye County closed ninety-five for a long time. And my understanding is it takes a heck of a lot to put these out. So that's just kind of what I was looking for.
Right. And that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. We have our presentation will go through lithium batteries and how they work and all their energy density and why they cause such intense fires and stuff like that.
Perfect.
And that'll kind of give us what you put all those cells together, put them in one place, how that takes copious amounts of water to extinguish it if you can. Uh, Captain.
Need a workshop on that.
We have more problems with that thing.
You know, new lithium battery.
It might catch on fire.
Okay, so Kevin, we're Frank Honeywell for the record. Definitely Smith Valley Fire Department, like the chief said. Your inventory is back here that I'm gonna put all the questions toward one of those three guys, not me. But Sean, we put together this PowerPoint is just kind of overview of lithium batteries as a whole. Um, because they're used for just about everything that we have in front of us today. Um, this just kind of goes through a list of the different types of lithium batteries. They are, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on that. Just know that there's a six major types of lithium batteries on the market today. And um, this kind of shows you what we're looking at. When we think about lithium batteries, we think of something very large. That's not the case at all. If you take the Nissan, whatever that pickup truck is.
Rivian.
Rivian, it has seven thousand six hundred and twenty-three of these little cells in that one vehicle.
About these size.
So similar to that seventeen five hundred battery right there, they're about that size. And just imagine there's seven thousand in that pot. You're talking about a storage facility, storage facility batteries are made up the same way. So you might have millions of these batteries inside a storage facility or millions of these cells making up a battery pack. So we can go to the next one. Um, where do they go? Golf carts, equipment, scooters, motorcycles, boats, cars. Um, wind generators, so the big wind turbines have lithium battery packs and solar panels, which is what you guys are talking about. The solar comes from solar panels, stores in the battery pack. And you're gonna have huge, huge maintenance and, and storage facilities to make that work. There you go, the next one. Um, one of the three biggest problems with any type of lithium battery system is a fire thermal runaway potential and explosive hazard that comes with that. We'll talk a little bit about that, why that happened here in a minute. Uh, just like everything that we're doing, this is my opinion, not anybody else's opinion, the environmental impact and recycling challenges. What do we do with these batteries when we get done? So I'll give you just a personal life example. Messing around somewhere close to aquatic water, drop my little Dewalt Quotus impact driver into the lake. Oh, no, jump down, grab it, pull it out, take the battery off. Um, put a new battery on, driver still works, but that battery is shot. So they don't do well with water, right? So what do I do in my infinite wisdom? I tell them, fix them. I put it on a charger. Well, after learning all the stuff that since we did this class, everything that was number one bad mistake. Um, because once the battery's been damaged, you don't want to put it back on the charger because most of these fires start during the charging process. So that's just a tidbit of information. And the other part is, part is transport and storage concern. So once all of these batteries cycle out, I'm gonna talk about this in a little bit. What do we do with them when they're gone or when they're no longer usable? Have we planned in, I'm not talking about specific Lyon County, but as a, as a let's say country in general, have we planned on what we're gonna do with these millions and millions of tons of lithium batteries in the end? So you can go to the next one. This is kind of just a slide that kind of shows how they're made up. Is it working?
Yeah.
Providing the operator can work, we're good. Um, and, and how they work, if you look at the picture on the top, it's basically you have a cathode and anode. So positive and negative side, then you have some electrolyte in the middle of that. And then you have a membrane that separates those two areas of electrolyte. What happens when these batteries fail is that membrane gets damaged one way or the other. And then you, and you have a combination between the two electrolytes inside the battery causes a chemical reaction, which creates an exothermic reaction, which chain links into, to the problems that we have with these batteries. So as long as the the container, which is the cell is not damaged, they're fairly safe. But what happens when that cell gets damaged and you could take this pin, I'm not, I thought about doing it here today is taking a little battery, I have a little Garmin GPS, take this pen and stab it, but I would melt down here podium. So I didn't do that. And but that's all it takes to set these things off. So imagine taking a car with seven thousand batteries in it and poking and taking a pen and poking those batteries and sit there and watch for the reaction to play. Um, so what, what causes these things to catch fire, physical damage? Um, so if you do something to break the airtight seal, alter damage to the batter barrier, when I talked about separating that barrier, if you damage that barrier that separates those two electrolyte parts, that can probably do disintegrate or do, do catch on fire. Overcharging, so we put them on, on a charger. Anybody ever taken their cell phone, put it on a charger and pick up your phone and it's hot? What saves that cell from becoming flammable is the cell phone has an internal device that says, turn me off, I'm too hot. When that, when that safety feature fails, then the battery will fail on your cell phone and turn into a fireball. So um, so it doesn't matter what scale you're looking at, whether you're talking about a storage facility or a cell phone, the same principles apply. Um, manufacturing defects, so the typical thing that, that comes out of this is you get a whole bunch of cloning. And when I say that, I mean, you get other companies are making batteries and stuff not to the same specs as the original people. So you have lower quality workmanship, and then those batteries tend to fail quicker than the name brand. And then exposure to high temperature. So I was talking to the chief about this this morning. Go to Death Valley in the middle of summer, a hundred and twenty degrees, leave your cell phone sitting on the dashboard of your car, you got probably ninety percent chance it's gonna turn into a fireball. And so you want, you gotta be very careful about exposure to temperatures. This is just kind of a, a little picture that shows what happens. Um, so we talked about mechanical abuse. So if you deform the outside container, either a puncture wound or even just a crushing injury. Here goes E-mast talk crushing thing. And then the other thing is, and you can look at this all day long on YouTube. Salt water does not do good with lithium batteries. So you get to get you your dead right formation on the, so basically crusty growth on a battery cover and then it eats through it. And then that allows electrolytes to combine and then you end up with a exploding time bomb. And then extreme temperature. So those batteries can, not every time a battery fails, is it gonna end up into this thermal runaway? Sometimes they can just short circuit and it goes to be a dead battery. Um, so you got a fifty fifty shot on which one's gonna happen, which just depends. Um, if it goes to the thermal runaway, one of the tall tale signs is, then in the training that we went to show a picture of a, a e-bike, somebody pushes into an elevator in Japan. See a little bit of smoke come off of it. Within about thirty seconds, the entire elevator burned up and fried everybody in the elevator. So you don't have very much time when this reaction starts to take action. So from a fire department perspective, if you roll up on something, George facility, for example, out wherever they're gonna put this solar farm and the building smoking, odds are you're too late. And, and because it's gonna go and it's when it goes off, it's gonna be very dangerous. This kind of shows you what happens. And so if you have a cell failure, then it starts a thermal run away. There's a bunch of temperature stuff involved in this. We're not gonna get into chemical engineering or electrical engineering, but one cell starts on fire. And, and basically what happens is they burn very hot. This is hypothetically, say twelve hundred degrees. But you can damage the cell protective layer at like four hundred degrees. So they burn so hot that they start a propagation effect through the whole system. So even if you just have one battery that go catches on fire, um, they burn at twelve hundred degrees, they can pinch it at four hundred degrees. So just, you don't have any way to stop it. Um, what we might see is electric vehicle fire inside a garage. Um, I had occasion yesterday to spend my day with an electrician um, that deals with this stuff all the time. And he said, one of the things that they advocate from the electricians union is for people on their homes, if you're gonna have electric car, please do not put your charging or inside your garage, put it outside. So if the electricians are telling you that, there's a reason for it. The other thing is scooters, little electric scooter bikes, these lift things and these little spin bikes that you ride around San Francisco and all those other places, but those things are the ones that are catching on fire more than anything. E-bikes, e-motocycles, all of that stuff. So like I said in the beginning, it doesn't matter if you're talking about my cell phone, or if you're talking about a storage facility, they all use the same battery in different sizes, shapes, and forms. There's your cell phone torching off, laptop torching off, laptops do the same thing. So if you have a laptop and your battery starts to swell, don't keep charging it. Bad things can happen. So why does water plus these cells and everything end up in that? Because, um, like the dendrite formation, especially seawater, if you have anything close to that has any type of alkaline or salt contact and content, content in the water, that's a bad combination for these batteries. Technically speaking, they're classified as B, B-type fires, but everybody tells you use a D-type extinguisher on them. Okay? So they're classified as a B fire. So you can put them out with an ABC extinguisher, which is a tip one you might find in this room like that one right there. Depending on the size and the location. So I'm not gonna take that and do anything to a vehicle fire. I'm not gonna take that and do anything to a storage facility fire. I might be able to put my cell phone out without one extinguisher. Um, and then the way that, and generally speaking, the way the extinguishers work, just like any other fire is they smother the, the thing that's burning and, and keeps the oxygen from getting to it. The thing about these fires, um, is if, if you're talking about a very small density area in, in one cell, it doesn't take very much oxygen to let that fire go off in that one cell. So, um, we might ask is, okay, well, how come these extinguishers don't work or we can't do this? Like I said, because the surface area to the oxygen ratio is pretty small. So, so if you think about in terms of smothering and fire, all you gotta do is, is there's no way you're gonna keep a hundred percent of the oxygen out of, as a source out of that little tiny cell. Unless you really drown a little on stuff. So the things we need to worry about, high temperatures, because they burn very hot, intense flames, reactions. Once it starts a thermal runaway, you could put the fire out today and a week from now it's starting back up. You might think it's perfectly, perfectly good. Uh, one thing they talked us about class, tow company comes up, picks up a Tesla on the side of the road, closes impound yard, a week later starts back up, burn up the whole impound yard. Um, and then toxic smoke is probably the worst. This is even more dangerous than the fire. Because there's a lot of toxic smoke that comes out of all of these type of fires. And, and for a first responder, that's probably something we're more concerned about than the fire. So you gotta make sure you got all your PPE SCBA's and all that stuff on when you're dealing with any type of these fires, especially if it's in confined space. Um, we talked about extinguishers already. Um, what are some tools available to us? So the one picture on the left is we don't have that in United States. That's a European method. So they have a giant dumpster full of water. They roll up there, they pick up these cars and so if they're burned, they put in the dumpster and, and it's full of water. And, and that's how they control it. They don't put the fire out. The fire does not go out that way. Because there's a, uh, video on YouTube where you can see somebody backs their jet skis into the, to the lake with a Tesla. And it catches on fire. Well, then they push a car in the lake and you can see it's still burning underwater. So it doesn't put the fire out. It just, what it does is it contains it. I'm gonna talk about that here in a minute. The other thing is you have portable ponds you can set up in the wildland world. We have these in terms of porta tanks that we, I guess we could use a porta tank to put some of these e-bike fire out. But by the time you set up the porta tank, the bike's gonna be burnt up anyway. So so there's no quick response thing on that. So this is what we have to work with and, and copious amounts. If you guys have heard about it, it was in the news not too long ago. They did an airdrop on a Tesla fire in California with a wildland bomber. It wasn't to put the fire out, it was to control the exposures around the area. So the tools that we have available and you could use these things, not just on vehicle fires and, and anything else, but what these tools, so that's a turtle nozzle. But the other ones, uh, I can't remember the name of the same principle. What you're trying to do is you're trying to get the water underneath the system. So if you have a storage facility with a battery pack system, there's probably gonna be some access point underneath that thing. What you wanna try to do is get water up underneath it to cool, to cool it down. And so what you're trying to do is you're trying to slow down that thermal runaway. Um, so this is what happens. All these little lithium ion batteries get excited, um, and they catch on fire, then they become projectiles. So imagine that same Ridge of Van or whatever it's called, those seven thousand six hundred batteries that catch on fire. Once they start going off, they start launching out of that containment thing. So then you potentially expose a whole lot of area around you. So hypothetically, you had a storage facility someplace and you had a big building that was full of these batteries calling on fire. You don't have to just worry about putting that building out. At some point in time, unless it's contained within that structure, you're gonna have the possibility of exposures on the outside. Uh, one of the things that they, they talked about is a fire blanket. And using a fire blanket to put these out. All the fire blanket does basically is the same thing I just said, is it controls the exposures, it doesn't put the fire out. Uh, fire, and then one of the things the chief and I talked about earlier is, okay, you have all these toxic fumes that comes off of this thing. You throw a fire blanket over something else, how are you gonna decontaminate, decontaminate the fire block, get after them? I mean, you're supposed to be able to use them again, but then we have to think about our personal safety too. Um, so what needs to happen in my opinion? Public education. I think the public needs to get educated, educated more on, on what is involved in having these things in your, in your neighborhood or in your own personal home, what to do. There are some, what's that thing called that you, that can that you put that? There's a system that you can use to deal with small fires and these things. And it's, they're expensive and it's a containment system. So you get this bucket that's full of kitty litter, but it's not actually kitty litter, there's some similar up. You shove your cell phone, shove your computer in that and you close it all up and then you ship that off to where the receiving facility is gonna take that. Um, so there are systems like that, but nothing to deal with a storage facility size information or even vehicles. And then the other thing that, and so along with my electrician guy that I hung out with yesterday, I hung out with Dr. Titus yesterday. We got involved in, between the three of us, an hour long conversation about this. And she's looking at trying to potentially introduce some legislation to help control some of the education piece, the fire, things we can, resources we can get to. And with that, I don't know what her plan is. I just, I just know that she's, she's on it. So other than that, that's the end of my little spiel here. If you guys have any questions, please refer to the three guys and I'll be good to go.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Mr. Honeywell, good to see you again. Um, couple things, what type of suppressor system is needed in storage facilities, recycling centers, et cetera? What do they, what do they recommend as far as?
So I, I can tell you from, from the training that we went to and the research that I've done, even on storage facilities, what they typically do, if you had a fire in a storage facility, the, the key to, to putting those out is spread out the fire. So you can cover with foam or something else to contain it. That's, so I don't know if a true suppression system, and you guys could, like, know me, inside a facility is going to do anything more than to cool it down.
There aren't any suppression systems that are actually.
So if a forklift, let's say a forklift accidentally sent one of its tines instead of hitting the pallet, sent it through the batteries and that could start a fire. So what would, so.
The biggest thing is trying to boot that from that facility for that thermal runaway to catch all the other. The biggest problem with suppression is trying to get to the specific battery. So that, that problem without one cell happening in the middle. And it's coming out like this. Well, you're putting water on there, it's not cooling that.
Right.
Can actually get water onto.
And then so recycling centers should not store the batteries though outside. They're even the old ones, because some of those batteries in those may still be good, right? I mean.
Right. And that's some of those, but, but these are so dense and energy. Uh, yeah, they can, those cells can still hold energy. So they're outside like, like you're saying with the, the vehicles that, you know, on a tow truck, there was one that lived up sixty-four days after it jacked. And it's just because of the damage that was done, then all of a sudden it has that. It shorts out and then you have the thermal runoff.
Right.
So, so the best way to deal with a lot of that stuff is to de-energize the system. So if you have some way of de-energizing that lithium battery pack, so it has no charge, then if you have a puncture or damage to that barrier that's in between, it's not gonna have a chemical reaction. So they're, they're the most dangerous when they're charging or when they're at full capacity. So, um, so a lot of things, what they did, they make tools on the vehicle side. They make things that you can run up to the car, plug it into it and de-energizes that system. It takes a little bit of time to do that. But that's kind of what you would have to have some way, or like the chief said, is one of the things that I've talked about vehicle fires is from a fire department perspective, is you drive up to the house, the two giant hooks through the back window, drag it out in the middle of someplace where it's gonna burn and not catch anything else on fire. That's how you put it out. Um, so, and as long as you can separate that, the initial root cause of that fire from the rest of it, you probably don't have to worry about exposures to a degree. And mostly storage facilities, they try to do their best at, at, um, de-energizing the systems before they put them in these big piles. But if you miss one, I mean, you're never gonna know that.
Thank you.
He's probably had more of a, I'd say, fire player experience. So it'd be a soft.
I can unmute, but support the plan, guys.
We are too.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, good. Very well said, Frank. I think you're, you're on, on track, man. Um, the only thing I, I really would add, um, you, you know, uh, there are some agents out there that are getting a lot of good press like uh, F five hundred, E-fire X, and some of those that are specifically designed to work in this environment. But the state of the art seems to be lots of water or let it burn.
Yeah, some of these vehicle fires can take thirty thousand gallons of water to put out. And the problem you have after that is all that runoff with all that toxic stuff, you know, as I get those, you're making service and strings.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Uh, when they're doing these, uh, solar farms, are they going to batteries and holding in batteries before they go out to the, on the grid? Are they going to batteries and holding it in batteries before they go out to the on the grid? So so what I'd like to see from. Because we're advocating on your behalf when we're going to B L M to to talk and and uh Naco and National. And we need to know what what we need to do for you guys. You know what I'm saying? It's like, what are what are some of the requirements that we should be advocating for to be a? B L M. I know B L M is supposed to take care of their own fires out on their land. But they're probably gonna call you up right away to to do something. Right? And so what should we be requiring them to have out at those solar fields? Yeah, I mean, even that, a storage tank or whatever, right? So so if you guys could get together and kind of brainstorm of what we should be. Uh, talking about. That would be very helpful. Well, there could be clear space away from from the edge of from wherever they're being stored. How many feet? That has to be clear, maybe gravel. So if you guys could brainstorm and get us a some kind of a list and walk us through it again, so that when we're out there in the public. Uh, or in the departments, we can be advocating for you.
So so the feds have come out with. I don't know how you guys are familiar with an E R G. There's an E R G specific to lithium batteries. Uh, which was that talks about isolation distance or such emergency response guidebook for lithium batteries. And and in this, it goes from everything from the cell phone sized battery to a watch battery to to storage facilities. And the minimum isolation distance on all of them is three hundred feet. So you so let's say your cell phone, Commissioner Hocke, they caught on fire in his room. Technically speaking, isolation moving for that cell phone is three hundred feet. Same thing with with uh storage facilities. So this is a a fairly new thing. Mr. Keller, and and what I would say is. If if these companies, and I'm sure they do, because this is all new to us too. If they have a containment plan. Or and I'm sure they do, because this is new to them. And what are they gonna do when this particular? Block of storage batteries catches on fire. What's their containment plan? So and then share that with the fire district. So we know what they did pre-liable and all that stuff. I think that would be hugely important.
One of the bigger things too is 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 technology and they're coming up with solid state batteries, which are a lot more uh secure. Um, they don't have the little. The the electrolytes in in between the little panels and. It's solid instead of like a uh liquid, so that you don't have that ability to shorten out and stuff. So. A solid state battery is probably where all this is ultimately going and stuff like that.
And another question, you uh talked about. Putting the charging stations outside the building. Is there a certain, because you can't put it really three hundred feet away. You know, it doesn't make sense in a in a subdivision or something like that, but I would. Really consider a part of our, or I don't know if it's already in our building codes, but if we were gonna do something like that, if we require them to. Put it on the outside or some kind of suppression if it was on the inside. So. To me, it would make more sense that and that would help them and help you guys, right? So the fire would be outside, so the more we can find out about that.
And I mean. The prevalence of these are isn't huge. You see it big on news and stuff like that. It's not, you know, smaller stuff, you have like scooters and stuff, the cars and stuff haven't gotten there yet. Um, some of the other problems that are gonna arise with cars are. Uh, it's just the time, so they wear out. So as soon as your Tesla is eight years old. You need to put a three thousand dollar battery charge into it, or you're just, we're gonna keep driving them. So that's gonna uh degrade the the packaging of that pack.
Well, I know that. The subdivision, if you've been noticing, they're getting closer and closer together. And if one goes up, we're gonna end up with a problem.
That's one of the common problems is if you if you look at like it, like we said in the beginning, if you want to learn about this, just go to YouTube. I mean, there's so much stuff on YouTube that you can learn on. But one of the problems with a charging station is they put ten charging stations in a row. If somebody pulls up to one of them with their eight year old Tesla. And that battery system fails, what typically happens is it lights all the whole row of chargers, cars charging up. And and like the chief alluded to, these batteries have a typical lifespan of seven years. They don't care if the cells do. So it doesn't matter if you're talking about your little tiny cell phone, or if you're talking about a storage facility, those cells have a typical lifespan of seven years. If you don't replace those things typically. At the end of that seven year cycle, then they start degrading on themselves and you end up a problem.
And you also uh spoke on the counterfeit batteries. I know for a fact that the batteries themselves. The counterfeit ones look identical to the one that you can buy.
And that's not something anybody in this room can control.
You can only look on the inside to find out the difference of of them, and you're not gonna take it apart to find out. It's just not gonna work or cost, got to catch on fire. But uh, a lot of that problem is on the internet. So like if you go get a D W O L battery and it it's cheaper on the internet, you get that good deal, you're probably getting a a fake one. And I know that there's been reports of people, they go in and buy the real one at the store. And then bring a counterfeit back in and switch it back, get their money back. And so then it's back on. So if the package has been opened or something like that, I wouldn't buy it off the shelf.
People.
Yeah.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Thank you guys for being here. I really appreciate a lot of information. A little scary information I might not really want to know about, but I do now. Uh, I do have a couple of questions for you. We touched on the on the counterfeit batteries. Is that a a big issue?
No, I I mean, I didn't realize it was really a big issue until. Well, the research and stuff that I was doing. I mean, if you go to Amazon, everybody goes Amazon. Better find a Garmin GPS battery. You can get to. What we call the OEM one. I mean, there's ten other ones, just like Commissioner Keller talked about, just like the OEM one. But they're made by who you don't know. I mean, so I. I don't know if you're gonna. It's not gonna ever get away from that.
Okay, and then um. Now, the the disposal of these really seems to be. Something that hasn't been a lot of forethought gone into. You know, because. We don't want them in landfills, but if you if you're at home and you got some and the battery goes out, you're gonna chuck it in your garbage can.
Or spend hundreds of dollars to send it through a recycle.
Uh, e- exactly, um. So that 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 I think is something that. Need needs more thought and I'm glad that that Senator Titus is is already looking at legislation on this because that's something that we're definitely gonna need. You know, you say. You recommend putting the chargers for your E Vs outside. Do you know if there's any HOAs that are prohibiting that and making them be in the garage?
That's that's the words of the a guy that does this for a living. So thirty year electrician told me yesterday that. They shouldn't be in your in in your garage.
Yeah, cuz that that wouldn't surprise me, cuz some HOAs won't let you put stuff outside, so.
And you can't control that. If they're gonna let you put it outside, you can't put it outside.
Right, that that's that's something that um might wanna look at legislation for as well. And then uh, last thing, and I'll whatever people talk, um. That they just announced plans for a lithium sulfur battery gig factor up instead. Do you guys know anything about lithium sulfur batteries? Yeah, right?
Well, there's actually twelve different types of lithium batteries. We're flying county fire. Um. Yeah, there's actually twelve different types of lithium ion batteries, the sulfur being a new one coming in instead facility there. Uh, but to answer the two questions regarding facilities. Um, this may help a little bit, both the I B C and the I F C. Uh, building codes and fire codes do have or have adopted. Requirements for storage facilities specifically to have a suppression system, alarm system and separation. So distance from another structure or flammable material based on the quantity of storage. As far as the recycling piece, redwood materials in Carson City, Story County and a new facility in Fernley, they do accept free recycling. At their facility.
And um. A question for the county manager. So we we reference those codes in our building code, right? The I F C and the I B C?
Correct, yes.
That's all I have. Again, in.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, the the batteries for like power tools and stuff like that. Is there a best practices as far as? Storing those in your garage and stuff or just roll on?
Had the same discussion. I'd be looking in the back of my truck, there're like fifteen of them. So I I don't know what the answer to that was.
The N F B has put out a paper on lithium ion battery safety. So we can get that too.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Frank, I just want to apologize for Commissioner Henderson. He asked you about an HOA, and you're a P H O R kind of guy, home on the range.
I don't know much about HOAs.
Unfortunately, I do.
I know they've discussed using foam on them and you're saying that really foam is. Not much better than water. Uh, but then we talked about the hazards to humans by using foam. That's come up. Recently. Uh, that's kind of my question is, are are we? Getting any information about them trying to come up with something that would work on these batteries?
It's like Chief Harvey said about the the five hundred system, the five for five thousand system. That is, that's something that's new coming up. And and that's something that it's it's kind of like your. Giant fertilizer tank and it's full of. The stuff that just supposedly work and there's a lot of there's specific extinguishers coming out for lithium. Fires. It's just it's kind of a new thing and it it's just kind of getting developed now, so.
Yeah, I can I can touch a little bit on that. So specifically the E Fire X, it's an encapsulating uh agent. It's gone through N F P A, underwriters laboratory, full approval, moving forward with a whole new suppression classification.
And then you have the hazard to humans.
So the 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 hazards are human with the problem of the A triple F, what the transit and that's all been.
Plus, I don't think you're gonna convince anybody that. Pays sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for a vehicle to set it outside. So it's gonna be really difficult to say, oh, your Tesla. Yeah, just stick it outside and put a cord three hundred feet away from your house. Uh, this, I I. Yeah. Right, yeah, okay. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I I just wanted to thank you guys again, you know, I mean. You guys all be obviously have a handle on this or you're you're getting a handle anyway. You're getting educated about it. And that's what that's why, you know, I just wanted you guys to come and let us know what you're doing and uh. Reassure the public, really. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It was very, very interesting and informative.
Thank you. Good to see you, Chief Harvey.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven, presentation of awards and a recognition of the accomplishments. Do we have any? Today? I don't see anybody. Jumping. Yeah, it might explode. And the batteries that you put in it. Commissioners and county manager reports on item eight. Well, let's see if we have any commissioner reports here. Uh, Commissioner Hendricks, let's start with you.
Uh, yeah, I attended the Zoom call with the governor's staff uh regarding the solar P I S. And that was that was good. They seemed to. Need more information, so I was glad we did that. Uh, attended the Smith Valley Fund Days. The Silver Springs Advisory Board. The Planning Commission Meeting. The National Association of Counties Public Land Steering Committee. Silver Springs Founder's Day and last night, the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Board Meeting.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much to report. I. Did not attend the Campo meeting this month because of conflict, but there was nothing on the agenda that had anything to do with Lyon County, so I didn't feel too bad about that. I did attend the Planning Commission Meeting. And um. I I really like watching those. Those are those are interesting. And um, that's really all I have.
Commissioner Keller.
I attended the Lyon County Planning Commission. I I too met with the governor's office and the Naco addressing the solar P I S and to expand on that a little bit. The meeting brought together a diverse group of stakeholders, including public lands consultants, county commissioners and representatives from Nevada Naco. And we discussed the pressing issues related to federal land management, renewable energy processes, projects, so that. What we just heard about, we should have had that before that. Uh, the meeting named to foster open dialogue and gather feedback on concerns regarding the B L M and the solar. I keep trying to say problematic, but it's programmatic environmental impacts statement process. I attended the Fernley Fernley City Council. Uh, Nevada Naco Association of Counties Legislative Committee, and right now we're tracking two hundred and twenty one bills. Uh, that that we we got our eyes on. And we haven't even started yet, so. Naco Rural Action Caucus attended that and Silver Springs Founder's Day, where Sheriff was the Sheriff Pope was the grand marshal. And he read in an proclamation honoring the rich history. Pioneer history of Silver Springs community and we had a parade with a good turnout. And uh, I think some people enjoyed the cooler we- weather. Going to a parade and stuff and not in the middle of like Fourth of July time, so it was pretty nice. That was it.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hocke. They attended the Fernley Boys and Girls Club Awards Banquet. Congrats to our kids, recognized as Youth of the Year. Um. Think we raised a little over five thousand dollars. Um, thanks to those that helped sponsor the event. Um, that is greatly appreciated. Tended the Fernley Council Meeting. Um. I don't, I won't necessarily call it transparency, but. I had a nice conversation with Ms. Allison today. Um, I think, um, I know that. A lot of lobbyist efforts are competitive and um. But I I also believe that. Um, she'll do a great job of working with city of Fernley and their lobbyists. To get stuff done for Lyon County on that north end. Um, I don't believe that that is. Been a traditional pattern. Um. And I'm not saying it's the county's fault. I'm not saying it's the city's fault. But I think if we combine some of those lobby lobbying efforts, um. It will help Lyon County as a whole. Uh, cuz I do know that like our Fernley does bring a lot of revenue into this county. Um. Uh, tended a fundraising event for foster children. Um. And uh. I just want to take my hats off to all those folks that are foster caregivers. I don't know that I'm wired that way. I hate to say it. Um. Um, but uh, I do appreciate all those folks that 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 are foster caregivers and. And I want to thank those folks that. Um, do that for for uh Lyon County kids for sure. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. And I attended the Walker River irrigation district meeting. Um. Everybody be happy to know the weatherman said that we have equal chance of having a warmer or colder winter. An equal chance of being a wet or drier winter. Um. Yeah, that's amazing. Could go either way. That's that's the report, just like, you know, what we were told. Uh, also attended the Smith Valley Park Board. And um. Planning Commission. Saw I was here in the morning, but I had a ten o'clock at um Weed Heights to tour their water system and decide what. Type of upgrade and improvements they have to make up there. And uh, I know that they had given us a presentation on their system. And of course, they're looking for some grants because some of their. Some of their equipment is thirty years plus. And it uh, it's getting to that point where they need to worry about changing it out for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, had our agenda meeting and that's about all I did uh in the last couple of weeks. And we'll go with the county manager.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So I've been off this week, so I don't have a whole lot to report, uh, but I did have two things that I wanted to mention. Uh, the first is that uh, applications for the planning uh commission are due next Friday. And that's if the that's in order to get them. In time to include them as late backup or as backup, excuse me, for the um. Board meeting first. Backup for the first meeting in November. Gone for a couple of days, can't talk. Um. The um. We'll we'll still accept the applications that they come in after that, but they would have to be included as late backup. So we do encourage you to get those in by next Friday. The second thing that I wanted to mention was, um, I sent a letter to the. Board of Indigent Defense Services. Um, kind of disputing the number of required defense attorneys, public defender attorneys, um. That they've established. So they did a study a few years back and um. That basically set the number of. Public defenders that each county has to have. Um, but we. And digging into those numbers, and I really uh think. Controller Foley for. Doing the lion's share of the work there. Um. Digging into those numbers, we believe that that it's over calculated. And so I sent a letter to the board. Digging into those numbers, we believe that, that it's over calculated. And so I sent a letter to the board asking for them to reconsider that now. Did make sure to send it to each of you as well. So did you have a copy of that letter? But just wanted to make you aware of some.
On that, I, I read through the letter. It was well-written. Probably the only thing that I would have mentioned would be historical data of, have we had any problem not having a public defender in the past? I don't believe so. I believe we've always been able to take care of our caseload. So, you know, that comparison and maybe something in the future saying, hey, we've, we've not had a problem. We don't need more public defenders.
That's an excellent point. So, um, I, what I was asking for is for the board to reconsider it. And so I'm hoping to do a presentation kind of detailing the different points that we had in the letter and some other ones in the future. Just to, to make sure that again, we want to make sure that we're providing adequate public defense. It's very important, very important part of our justice system, but when the number of public defenders far exceeds the number of prosecuting attorneys that you have in the county, that doesn't quite work out that way. So. So anyway, the, I submitted that and looking forward to hearing back. Any questions?
Questions? I, I did want to compliment on that. It was, it was well-written. Anything else? Thank you. Go back to your day off. On to elected official reports.
Chief Deputy Mitch Ranning, Kansas City Sheriff's Office. Morning. Thank you for having me. Morning, County Manager. Sheriff Pope's at the Post Commission in Las Vegas this morning, so he couldn't be here. Asked me to send his regards to the Commission though. They're down there working on, uh, some standards for the Post Academy. There's some discussion about expanding the Post Academy to include some additional hours and some additional training blocks and things like that that could have some impact on our staff, particularly with the volume of candidates that we're sending over to the academy. We start talking about forty additional hours of training on each one of those blocks. That's going to stretch out our time that we're losing people over to the academy. So we want to make sure that we're involved in those conversations. Uh, in addition to, uh, some of the other things that they're talking about as far as, uh, physical training standards. I know one of the, the problems that they've had over the academy that we have been very fortunate to not be experiencing here is, uh, an increase in employee injuries during the physical fitness testing and some of those things. And that has affected some of our rural partners and other parts of the state. So the sheriff would personally be down there doing the rest of those things. Add a couple of, a couple of things I want to make sure you're aware of going on, uh, this Saturday over at Fuji Park in Carson City is the K-9 Expo. Uh, we're very fortunate, Sergeant Galvin and K-9 Blady actually won that event last year. And so they'll be over there defending, uh, that title on Saturday. Uh, all of our Canines will be over there participating. It is a fun event. It's free of the public. So folks can make the drive over there. It is a little bit of a shock from, uh, some further parts of the county. But, uh, it's, it's worth a trip over there to go see those guys. They do meet greets with the dogs and then they have a whole bunch of demonstrations and things set up down there. Uh, last week we had a gentleman named Sonny Garcia up, uh, that did a presentation for a bunch of our deputies. We had hosted this previously back in the spring and, uh, it was very well received by our staff. So we brought him back to get, uh, most of the rest of the deputies that hadn't been able to attend. And, uh, his presentation is really about dealing with the traumas of law enforcement and, uh, providing resources in mental health concepts to those guys for managing a career to try and get longer careers out of our deputies and mitigate the traumatic things that they see during their careers. Again, his presentation was very well received by our staff and, uh, we're always looking for ways that we can integrate those types of things to our people and, and really try and make, uh, the law enforcement profession is, is easy on them mentally and emotionally as we can. So, uh, that presentation was done in conjunction with the USCCA. They've been a pretty good partner for us and, uh, it was done at no cost to, uh, to the Sheriff's Office at all. They, they fronted the whole cost to get Sonny up here to do that presentation. Uh, we're at the NAMI Walk on Saturday. Uh, we had a booth set up up there with the, with some of our most deputies and some of other, other deputies around to interact with the public. Uh, NAMI has been a great partner for us and making sure that we're on the, the front lines of, uh, mental health for people in the community and integrating most, uh, the Abell tablet systems and some of those other things that we have. It ended up being a, a great interaction. We got to talk to a lot of folks up there and, uh, continue to build that relationship with, with people over west of Nevada name. Uh, we have Halloween coming up. We're going to try some different things for Halloween this year. One of the things that we're going to do is, uh, we're going to work some foot patrols out in the communities. So we'll have deputies out on foot, interacting with the trick-or-treaters, trying to get a little bit different perspective of, uh, what some of our communities are, especially the, the little bit busier, heavier, uh, traffic areas that we have in the county. And, uh, trying to increase the law enforcement presence out in those areas. Nevada Day following that, we're going to be doing a traffic saturation up on the fifty corridor and mound house. We don't have a ton of Nevada Day festivities that go on out here in the county. But, uh, that fifty corridor gets hit pretty hard with traffic, people going over into the parade and, and coming back. And, uh, we're going to focus on impaired driving enforcement and then speed through that corridor and try and make sure that we don't have any incidents going on over in Nevada Day holiday. As far as a, a general crime report goes for you, uh, we have seen a little bit of a dip in, in arrests, uh, here coming into the falls. The weather's cooled off. Uh, Councilman Lau up in Fernley wanted to point out that was football season and, uh, he believes that, uh, football may have calmed everybody down a little bit, but, uh, we don't have any evidence to suggest that. Uh, we are still seeing a high volume of proactive interactions with the public. Uh, traffic stops aren't down, subject stops aren't down. Uh, we're not seeing really a decrease in calls for service. We're just not seeing necessarily those same things that require an arrest or somebody to be booked into the jail. So we are monitoring that statistic. That's one that, uh, if we start seeing a, a prolonged, uh, decrease in that, uh, we'll take a little bit harder to look at and figure out what's going on there. But, uh, that's really been over the last three weeks or so that we've seen that decrease in those numbers. And then the final thing I'd like to remind everybody of is, uh, as we come out of, uh, all the trunk-or-treat events here in October, we'll be increasing our fundraising efforts for shop of the sheriff. We do have a, a GoFundMe set up for that. And, uh, we're looking forward to kicking off that event, uh, again here in December. Have you had any answering questions if you have?
Questions?
Just, thank you, Mr. Just, just to comment again, I, I really appreciate all the positive interactions you guys have with the, the kids. You know, because the more positive ones they have when they're young, the, the less they're going to have when they're older and then have to be incarcerated. We don't want that.
We, we agree. Thank you.
Yeah, last night at the, and when you spoke at, uh, Fernley City Council, you talked about how much more pot you actually ended up with out of that bust. And, uh, I was curious because of the, such the amount of it. How long did you, when did somebody note, uh, realize that that was going on? I mean, it seems like a pretty big operation that all of a sudden, you know, you finally got them, but how did that even get to be that big with that much growing?
So we had the, the first indications of that back kind of towards the end of the spring. Um, we, we had some things going on with it. Um, we got a couple of complaints regarding some marijuana odor at the break of heart location, which, uh, is interesting. If you got an opportunity to go out and actually go to those locations, the one on Ninth Street should have generated a whole bunch of citizen complaints. Uh, most of the folks out there on Ninth Street that interacted with that grow or the people at that grove were told by then that, uh, the university had provided them with some sort of an experimental permit of some type that was allowing them to lawfully grow the marijuana out there. And so that it shut down a lot of complaints or interactions with citizens out in that area. Again, these guys started this operation, actually procured the land, uh, back in like November, so it hasn't really been out there for, for even a year yet. Uh, then they started doing the construction and kind of building those things up. Now, we were on this thing back, like I said, about the end of spring, uh, which we anticipated is about the time they started the, the grow out there. Large scale as far as acreage is, is where most of the, uh, the weight came from. And then, uh, these guys were harvesting. And one of the things that they had, uh, had told us during that investigation is that, uh, people normally came and picked up the marijuana from them. And they disappeared and showed up for a little bit. So that's why we believe we had that increased weight of marijuana out there. Be, because it just, it really hit the height of harvest season and nobody had come and picked it up yet. As far as how we got the information in the spring and then why does it take, you know, five months or something like that to, to get out there and actually wrap up, uh, wrap up the whole thing. Our investigators did a whole bunch of surveillance out on these operations. And they also wanted to go through the processes to make sure that we didn't have some sort of a legal operation going on. Making sure that they vetted permits, that they vetted the people that were there. Uh, and then the, the collaboration with other law enforcement agencies and stuff like that. Uh, in conjunction with a little bit bureaucracy and, and those types of things, string those processes out a little bit.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would think that the neighbors would have noticed that the Department of Ag wasn't out there, the university wasn't out there. Uh, that the people picking up the stuff wasn't a commercial truck that had the name of the company on there. You know, that kind of telltale things. Usually don't see them closer to town on the high scale because they got to pay a water bill. And they don't want to pay that water bill because that's a red flag, an energy bill. But, uh, out there on that acreage, they had out there. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the other thing that I, I think is important to note is, uh, they had dug these grows down into the ground. And so if you stood at ground level and looked out at them, maybe you could see a little bit of the top of white tarps out there, but most of them were lowered into the ground. So they weren't really visible from a street level, um, which, which caused some investigative problems also. We didn't really get into the full extent of what was there until we started flying drones and stuff over the top.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought your presentation last night at, uh, the City Council was great as well. And then, um, I know that, uh, just to follow up to a conversation we'd had, um, I believe a Sheriff Pope meeting, meeting or two ago about school resource officers and, uh, the possibility of adding one, uh, to the Fernley area. I know one is is a stretch, um, for all the schools and the population up there. Are we looking at adding or?
Yes, we've absolutely had those conversations with the, the schools about trying to get a, a resource officer added, uh, particularly up there in Fernley. I know, uh, a, a lot of surrounding counties and a, and a lot of the standard they're going to is a school resource officer in every school. Just because of the, the safety concerns that are going on there as well as making sure that we're having those positive interactions with kids. And we're able to rapidly respond to, uh, even minor calls for service regarding, regarding youth. Long ways down the road for us, uh, here, here in Lyon County and at our sheriff's office, just, just given some of the challenges that we have. But, uh, the first order of business in line that is getting another school resource officer up there to Fernley.
Well, and I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I am by no mean advocating for one at every school. But, um, but I just see the benefit and, um, man, they do, they do a great job and it, it's a, it's really remarkable. How the, the impact that the SRO has, uh, on the school. So my hat's off to all you guys and gals and appreciate everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lindberg.
Stacy Lindberg, Lyon County Clerk Treasure. Um, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Our team is super busy getting ready for this general election and we're trying to build confidence and I think we're, we're all very nervous, but very assured that, you know, we're going to be there and, and service our community. But I wanted to also just verify. Um, we had a couple of press releases and I think some of the news reported them a little different than the actual fact. So I just wanted to clear that up and maybe answer any questions because I know you guys get a lot of questions from your constituents, not always here to touch base on them. So one, that's, I, I'm available today for that. So I wanted to start with that to give you time if you've heard anything or have any questions. But on the voter registration cards that the state, uh, uh, sent out, they did the whole state. Um, of the seventeen counties, Carson and Lyon, we chose not to participate in that program because the return card for verification of signatures in that program was just a postcard. So it would be leaving signatures, birth dates, last four of your social, just on an open postcard to be mailed back. Or, you know, some people, well, we can put it in our own envelopes. What I would like would be either a secure envelope or, you know, or not at all. That's kind of the choice I made. So I went with not at all. Well, the printer at, and, and it really wasn't the Secretary of State, and I, I know a lot of people were kind of upset about that blaming them, but it was a printer error. Um, they actually included all the instructions and the envelope for doing the signature verification, which confused all of our voters. So the, the first day we clocked around five hundred incoming calls in the first two days about that question, like where is the card? Where is the card? So the card was not included, but all the instructions to complete and return the card were. So that's what caused most of the confusion to our voters. So we've assured them that, you know, there's nothing they need to do. We're not, you know, i- in the event they wanted to uh, update their signature, we did have another card that we could send them that could be securely returned. Um, and we've had some people just stop in and, and update their signature, but I would prefer either in person or a secured envelope for any future mailings for that. So, um, I just want to, um, put in one more thing too, is that we had a media request for some information on people unable to register with new addresses that we would not register them because we couldn't verify their address and that is false. Um, the main thing is they couldn't be registered just online with the Secretary of State because we had to actually precinct them and put that point in and some of those new areas. So we've asked the Secretary of State to please just refer them to us and let us, let them, let us help them. To date, I haven't heard from whoever complained about that, but I'd love to speak with them. I'd like, love to get it settled. Um, but we're trying to deal with anything like that. And if you have anyone having issues like that, please just have them call us. I mean, we, we'll help them right away. So that's all I, oh, and I had one more thing is, um, then the Nevada Association of County Clerks and Election Officials, we actually put together a little fact and myth trying to help educate voters on, you know, some of the real, uh, things that we're dealing with out there and some that are made up. I made some several, several copies. I don't know how properly to do this. I was just going to set them out on the table in case anybody wanted to, to grab them for review, if that's okay. Um, and then I can answer any questions or, um, anything you guys like to hear about.
We're good. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We're going to take a ten minute, well, not ten minutes. We'll go till ten fifteen. Take a break till ten fifteen. It's now ten oh eight. So at about seven minutes. Okay, we're going to get going back here. It's ten fifteen. Ten fifteen, we're going to start up again. Reconvene. All right, we're at item ten, appointed official report. Who wants to make some report? Okay. Community Development.
So, uh, perfect, thank you. Um, Gavin Henderson for the record, Lyon County Department Director. Um, just wanted to give the board an update. Over seventeen, start with soon, just basic performance master metrics going like personnel, some projects working on, and they did put a brief presentation together that most of the commission priorities saw at the planning commission, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate that presentation. So Building Department, as of last board meeting, which was September seventeenth, we did a hundred and thirteen new permits processed, um, and eight hundred and twenty-two inspections performed. So our guys are working hard and, uh, permits and, uh, applications are still coming in. Inspections are still being, uh, conducted. So everything on the building site is looking good. Plan Department, um, we received nine applications since the September sixteenth, application's middle date. One CUP, one zoning map amendment, one abandonment, um, one final subdivision map, and one administrative design review, one master plan amendment, two site proven plans, and then one. Um two site proven plans and then one amendment to a subdivision map condition. Um so look forward to seeing those coming forward. Uh moving on to personnel. So we did finally hire a code enforcement officer, uh Mr. Joseph Sanchez. He starts Monday, October twenty-first. So we're excited to finally fill that position and we're looking forward to having him in the office and he'll be a huge asset for the county board. Getting out there, resolving some of those complaints quicker than uh, you know, me and myself and I were at the time. Um obviously, we're prioritizing life safety um enforcement issues at this point in time, but with him being there, we can get to all of it and more efficient matter. Me working through a backlog, um but we're trying to get to that through those as quickly as possible. So we can start catching the ones as they come in and get some. Um projects. So staff placed the newly adopted area drainage master plans on the Lion County website. So the public, um certainly public to view, see the report, um the presentations. All material on those provided the board is on the website um for the public to access. Um staff is continuing to work with the county engineer to polish those procedures and um the necessary training to implement those twenty twenty-four drainage guidelines um recently approved by January twenty twenty-four. Um this will include some overarching development guidelines similar to those developed for the Dayton Valley ADMP, just to make it for place of product. Um also staff is in the initial stages of gathering required small documents for um an initial assessment of the county's floodplain management policies and documents um for participation in the CRS program. Um the CRS program is stands for Community Rating System. It's a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management practices that exceed the minimum. Departments that NFIP lays out. Um and as part of that, it's a point based system. So they look at, you know, our documents, our uh ordinance, um our public outreach. We get points based on that. It starts at five hundred and kind of scales up from there. We get the initial assessment and just kind of see where we're currently standing and they give us benchmarks to move forward in the future. Fit the five hundred point threshold uh right away. It's a five percent discount on floodplain um insurance policies, which will go a long ways. Um for the community and then we can only improve and the more points we gain going in the future, that discount just gets greater and greater. Um I don't have the the full table breakout with me, but I think it's about a thousand point separation before you start increasing five percent each time. Um so we're looking into that. We also opened the RFQ for the massive services agreement for the Lion County. Engineer and county surveyor and other related services. So if you go into the. Doing businesses tab on the county website, you can see it in the bids. So it's open and ends November fifteenth. Um as far as applications by five o'clock PM on that Friday. And at that point, um we'll move forward in the process with getting those and that scoring. With that being said. Uh oh. No, I think I. Hmm, all right. It was working. I I will say. When you gave it to me.
Again.
Um so first, uh final subdivision map recently recorded. Uh this one was approved unanimously on November fourth, twenty twenty-one. This is the cottages at traditions PLZ twenty twenty-three zero two eight. Um the final map was reported September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Um just a brief project description. It was forty-three detached single family residential lots on an eight point two-six acre parcel. German located at the northeast corner of Nevada Station Parkway, Kerr Gate Road intersection in the traditions development um in Dayton, Nevada, APM zero one six four zero six one zero. Kind of like that. Yeah. Um next one, River Park Unit Three, Phase Seventeen, DN Eighteen, PLZ twenty twenty-one zero nine seven. Tentative subdivision subdivision map was approved by the Board of County Commissioners uh unanimously on January seventh, twenty sixteen. Final subdivision map was reported um September tenth, twenty twenty-four. This one was again seventy-three detached, single family lots. On approximately thirty-five point three acres located south intersection US fifty and Fork Cho Cho Road in Dayton, Nevada, APM zero one six zero two two four one and zero two nine seven three one zero. And last but not least, we have traditions Village One, Phase Three, PLZ twenty twenty-one dash one one one. Um tentative subdivision map was approved unanimously by the board commissioners on May third, twenty eighteen. The final subdivision map was reported September sixth, twenty twenty-four. This was a sixty-one, single family residential lots on approximately seventeen and a half acres located north of US Highway Fifty and northeast of Dayton Valley Parkway. Dayton, Nevada, APM zero one six four zero six zero eight. And with that being said, that's the final maps have been reported. Since April. So without open up any questions concerned.
Commissioner Keller.
Do you have a overall map of the communities that when we, when you, we uh get the final maps or when there's a tentative map that kind of outlines them all over?
So this is a great question and um. So we ran into some stop blocks with the current GS program and running out of uh server space to do a development map on there. Um so utilizing perimeter, which is good, it's kind of the emergency management. Um it's a, it's basically a program where emergency management can do shape files on there and you can add a description. I think there's a three thousand character limit. So as part of that and using it for public information, um I was going to take advantage of that because it is a free software um for Lion County. And we can draw the shape files on there for those developments. The parcels aren't exactly on there. Um at this point in time, but it is a quick way for us to put the developments on there. Um it's open to the community. They can click on it and pull it out. It'll have the project description in there. And um it'll be open to the public and um it'll be on the website. It'll be on for emergency management and then we'll all see guys at this point in time until we have that server capacity to. Move forward with a complete development map. I mean, kind of just meet meet that there in time period.
Well, what I was looking for is because if you have a tentative map that you know they're moving forward, it tells us where where our trends are, where we're. How our developments are going. I'd like to know how far along are the developments, you know, if they're phase one, phase two, phase three. So we can see that there's. The the build out is starting to, you know, be completed. There's going to be more growth somewhere else. And I also like to see where the traffic signals kind of won't as we start going through with that. So we can see uh.
How the products coming out.
Uh how the communities come together. And then when we go to planning, when that uh when they have anything come before planning, if that map was included. Right from the get-go, you can see, okay, that's where it's going. And then you can funnel down. It just helps out, you know, the overall where it's at, how it's going to be influenced in the community. And we could do it from different communities. There's not a lot going on like in Silver Springs or Stagecoach. Those could be done fairly quick. But the impact I think is more of the Dayton area. And so and if you put the names of the. The development on there, that would help out. So you know, you say traditions. Okay, well. We know, but the public doesn't necessarily know what traditions is.
And we can um as part of that perimeter software, there is an overlaying feature. So we could outline the the full tentative map subdivision and then we can go in there and isolate them based on phase two, phase three and whether they're in the process and whether it's. You know, in review or they're, you know, in construction and we can kind of break it down that way.
And if we're also doing with the road department as far as uh any roads that are going to be a loop or something like that, we could.
Patrol plans that are.
Yeah, something that we can say, okay, this makes sense. And I think it would help out on our planning commission.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gavin.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. Um I'm Brian Kirkley. I'm from juvenile probation. Uh it's taking too long to get here. I wanted to come and introduce myself. I took over the chief role for Eric Smith. Who uh was a great leader and it's been a kind of a wild transition, but we're good. We're fully staffed. Uh we have. Three pretty new officers. One's a Lion County native that we're really have to have picked up from the Fallon Police Department. Uh but we we have another new officer going to be going to the uh academy in March. Uh but referrals are up. They've they're over a thousand last year. And they're going to just continue to increase. Burnley, Burnley's grown, Dayton's growing, Silver Springs, Silver Springs is growing. And uh with that, we're seeing a lot of. A lot of complex cases with kids, but we're doing our best to stay ahead of it. And um yeah, I'm just happy to be here and happy to work with you guys and. If you ever want to know more about what we do, I'd be happy to fill you in another time. I don't want to waste the commissioner's time today, but uh any questions for me right now?
It's never a waste, really. I'm glad to see you. Questions?
So you're part of the Windrick program?
No, sir. You've been out probation. So we we work with Windrick. Windrick's the uh inpatient drug and alcohol program out of Silver Springs. So that's where we send a lot of our kids.
So how does that tie with the schools? I I the reason why I'm asking this is last, yesterday, last night, uh they said that our school truancy was up. The thirty-eight percent, I think, now. And do you, is that part of your thing?
One hundred percent. So we we were actually just implementing now bringing back uh truancy advisory board. So um our district attorney is involved in that and actually my my deputy chief, uh deputy chief. Chris Gentile is going to be sitting on that board along with several other uh several other members and. I can't tell you exactly where they pulled from, but one's going to be from the school district, Lion County School District. We're going to try to find a way to uh to get ahead of the truancy problem because it's a, it's an issue.
Yeah, thirty-eight percent is ridiculous. So. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson. Good to see you. Um congratulations. Uh they picked a good person to fill Eric shoes for sure. Um I just want to, I see uh juvenile probation at high school quite often and. And uh they do a great job of dealing with those kids and and uh. Truthfully, when it's thirty-eight percent, that's. That's um something that just can't come though from juvenile probation because there's just not enough juvenile probation officers. It's got to come with policy, school districts got to get some teeth into it. Because juvenile probation deals with uh, in my opinion, um. More risky behavior than truancy for sure. I know it's on your plate. Um but it's going to have to be a team effort there. Can't just fall on juvenile probation because it'll never get solved.
Now, I I completely agree with you and I think that uh truancy can be, it can be all across the spectrum, right? It can be a, it can be just a. A kid who doesn't want to wake up and go to school today, or it could be a a significant something going on in the home that um we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg with the with the truancy stuff. So. That's, I think that's the going to be the the beauty of having that board come back into play is that they'll be able to. Maybe pick apart some of these cases a little bit further because you know, there's only so much uh discretion and. Under the way statutes written, what a judge can actually do. Um so that truancy board is able to kind of informally see a lot better what what's going on. So. Um I'm excited that that's getting going again, but it is, it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing. And yeah, unfortunately, we are, we are dealing with some complex stuff out there with kids right now and. I'm trying to get a handle on it and doing the best we can. So uh but yeah, I appreciate you guys. Looking forward to working with everyone. So.
Okay, uh Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I want to thank you for for uh your effort. Uh could you bring back, you know, sometime in the future and tell us how that board's doing and it would.
Absolutely.
I would love to hear it. Give me a phone call, whatever. I I just curious of what works.
Yeah, it's like I said, just getting back into the swing of things. So I will definitely come and brief you guys on that as soon as you see what's what it's doing. So.
Thank you.
We look at truancy, you know, if they've left home and then to get to school, there's up to something. Now, now you're really into your job. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming today.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks. Take care.
Okay, ah.
Hey, we're Allison, Lion County Emergency Management. So since Gavin Henderson brought forward that we will be rolling out perimeter. Um I did want to bring it forward to this board. Um the Nevada Division of Emergency Management through Homeland Security Grant Funds. Um is providing a mapping software to Lion County at no cost. Um I think it will be a great tool for citizens to see the hazards in our community. So it will have an internal to first responders. Um platform as well as a public facing platform that we can make available on our website to post road closures, um other hazards. Um. Anything specific to Lion County, I think we can use it for other purposes. A great example was. We had a hard time posting alternate routes as, you know, contributed to. The BDR that was submitted by this board during the Wilson Canyon closure. Um this tool has a lot of capabilities that would help. Push that information out to the community. So I'm looking forward to the rollout and we'll be doing public information. Um beginning November first, we'll have access. So yesterday we had a great overview training at the Lion County Local Emergency Planning Committee. Um and the vendor is going to come out and do additional trainings with the sheriff's office and myself and fire districts so that we know the full scope and capabilities and of course, community development. Um and then the second update I have is that FEMA finally, almost a year later, approved our. Um regional hazard mitigation plan that was adopted by this board in December of twenty-three. So as a county, we're eligible for hazard mitigation grant funds through September of twenty twenty-nine. Um so kudos to everyone that participated in that. And all the entities that were formal participants will also be eligible, um such as the sub can personal water subconservancy district, um. All the fire protection districts, uh conservation districts and and all of those that participated. So. Um a lot of heavy work, heavy lifting went into that from all the agencies. And now that we finally have that stamp, we can write for additional grant funds for projects that make sense for Lion County.
Questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online? You have any other. Appointed official reports? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move to advisory board reports. Anybody in chambers? Let's see anybody here. Let's see anybody online with their hand up. Uh we're going to move down to item twelve, consent agenda. Action will be taken on on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So do I have any requests from commissioners? Any requests from the public? Seeing none, then I'll look for a motion for items twelve A through twelve M.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda twelve A through twelve M as presented.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Going to move on to the regular agenda. Public hearing on planning items. Thirteen A for possible action to approve the request from Thomas Combs for the abandonment of a sixty-foot. Wide dedicated access easement as granted on land map ninety-one, three, three, eight. Located at fifty-seven, forty and fifty-seven, sixty, Iron Mountain Boulevard and Stagecoach APM zero one five dash three, three, one dash twenty-six. And zero one five dash three, three, one dash twenty-seven, PLZ twenty twenty-four dash zero five nine.
Good morning. Lisa Nash, senior planner. All right. So I'm going to give a little background on this first. Um this project was seen, there's two parcels. Um. The southern parcel you can see here, this was seen uh by the. Planning Commission in October of twenty twenty-three to get a tentative parcel map. They have the intent to divide and it was approved to divide the southern parcel into two twenty-acre parcels. And um the site is located, I should have started with that, to the east of Iron Mountain Boulevard, north of Shawnee and Stagecoach. So this is what they just finished. They reported their boundary line adjustment and. These two parcels you can see here, they had to shift the line just a little bit north, take some from their northern parcel in order to make the full twenty acres. On each parcel to the south. So this is in the final stage now where they're ready to come in. For their final parcel map. However, discovered in the final stages and reviewing everything, there is a very faint line you can see here. Can we go to the next slide? It'll show it better. The wider slightly hatch line there, that's the abandoned, there's an easement that is for a roadway access. That wasn't abandoned. Um previously, a PUE was abandoned for it. That's the public utility easements, but the road was not. And in discovering this, it really divides the property up and doesn't provide any useful access and doesn't connect to anything else. And they've moved. With their boundary line adjustment, they moved all those easements to the outsides of the property like is normally done on a property. So this is kind of cleaning up a step along the way. And um it is the final step they need to do so that they can record their final map uh to do the. Tended a parcel map on the bottom parcel. I hope that makes sense and I'm happy to answer questions or go back over. I kind of threw a lot out there, but if we can go to the next slide. Um granting an abandonment must include the finding that the public's not going to be injured by the abandonment and that this isn't going to. Granting and abandonment must include the finding that the public's not going to be injured by the abandonment and that this isn't going to have a negative effect on any parcels, utilities, roads, or any nearby property owners. So this roadway easement, as I expressed before, it doesn't affect the neighboring properties. There are still easements for access to all the properties around this road. No one really knows. We tried to research to find out why this roadway easement was put in there. It doesn't have, it appears on maps, it disappears, it appears again. It doesn't seem to have a long-term plan to have connected into anything other than way back when this subdivision was created in the eighties. So at this point, we can't find any reason why this would negatively impact anything. And I've spoken to, I think, all but one or all but two of the surrounding property owners. I've personally gone over the maps with them to make sure they understood because they got our noticing. And they wanted to understand. So we talked about how they access their properties, how they can develop their properties in the future. And we've, staff feels very confident that this won't have a negative impact on anyone. And we did have this reviewed by the county engineer before it came forward. It has already been signed off on. Their letter was included in your packet and it says they corrected a few things. They made some changes and they feel that the map that shows the abandonment is appropriate and the boundary line adjustment is good and everything's clear to go forward. And as I stated previously, there was with this roadway, which is often easement, which is often very common is a public utility easement. It was banned on a previous map. So that has been cleared up and no utilities needed to be contacted. Now I realize that was a lot very quickly. I probably should have slowed down. Please feel free to ask any questions if you have about the process.
Questions?
Yeah. So when I'm looking at this map.
Yes.
Okay.
This one or the one before?
It's the one, well, it shows like another easement on the out on the east side.
Yeah.
So you moved it to the outside. So it still connects to the imaginary road up above.
It still connects all the way around the property if that's ever developed as such. It was something that was overlooked on a previous map and it didn't have the required easement on the outsides of the property, which all persons require. So that has been tracked.
That's all I.
All right. Well, there, your recommended motion, if you find this okay to approve, is in your report or I have a slide up here if you're interested. And sorry, went a little fast. This is pretty simple. You'll be seeing a few more of these coming forward as we're cleaning up some maps before they go to final map.
Fast is good. Any public input? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion on thirteen A.
Just took it down.
Chairman Hocken, based on the aforementioned findings, I move that the Board of Lion County Commissioners approves their request by Thomas Coombs for abandonment of the sixty foot wide dedicated access easement as granted per land map nine, one, three, three, eight and located at five, seven, four, zero and five, seven, six, zero, Iron Mountain Road and Stagecoach. APNs zero, one, five, dash, three, one, uh, three, three, one, dash, two, six and zero, one, five, dash, three, three, one, dash, two, seven. PLZ, uh, two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, five. Subject to the following condition, any additional access easements shall be included in the final parcel map to be recorded within the timeframe. Included with approval tentative map, parcel map PLZ two, zero, two, three, hyphen, zero, six, three, including findings, A through D.
Second. Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you for cleaning that up.
And I see the judge is here. So we're going to move to seventeen B and allow judge to come up for seventeen B, which is for possible action, approve adding a new senior district court clerk position at an estimated annual cost of ninety two thousand with pro raid fiscal year funding sixty nine thousand to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency. Sir?
And thank you for taking me out of order. He's not done with the hearing. I appreciate your willingness to let us come down and explain why we're asking for the position. Approximately about a year and a half, two years ago, we got the court master position changed. It used to be uh, part-time child support, part-time juvenile. And then we were combine it and get a full-time attorney position. And then we were able to start going back to where we're trying to get the juveniles done as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, the numbers over the last three, four years, they're going. We got a break with COVID. Now the numbers are steadily climbing and we're seeing a lot more difficult juvenile cases and part of it is out of our control. Again, as the court, we deal with whatever sent to us. Townings growth. You have different philosophies now. The sheriff's office, the school has the zero tolerances. The school now has sheriff resource officers. We're starting to see the numbers go back up because more and more kids are being referred into the juvenile justice system. We have to get through them quickly. Several reasons. Uh, one, it's not good for a family, the child to be in the court system. Two, which has the fiscal costs to the county. If we're not getting through them quickly, you have more kids sitting in detention. We're running out of detention spaces. I've heard from the juvenile probation office or fiscal people. It's, it's a problem. And so we need to move the kids along quickly. Your detention beds just aren't there. And then even if they are there, you don't want to be spending them because it's more cost for staff, more cost for feeding them, educating them and everything else. So one of the questions we received back when we put the request in was why did you do this during budget? And that's a good question. We understand the budgeting process. You typically only see us during the budgeting process. But our numbers starting in twenty twenty three, they were there. But in twenty twenty four, they really started to take off. And it's really the last two quarters of the fiscal year twenty twenty four where the numbers are just getting crazy. Each month, the court master has been doing forty. Now we're up to fifty. Uh, this month we're doing sixty. And we're predicting basic on the filings, we could be up an additional ten, fifteen cases. That's for one judge doing sixty cases a month. That's prep, hearing time, writing orders after the fact. Additionally, because we don't have the support staff, the judge is also doing a lot of her own scheduling, talking to the different parties and so forth, and trying to make sure everybody's on the same page as to what are we doing? How are we doing it? How quickly are we doing it? The position we're asking for is sort of like a lack of a better metaphor, a point guard. The clerk does the filing, takes care of the all the paperwork for the clerk's side of the office. And then this position will also take care of the scheduling and the administrative for the judge, court master. Each judge, we have our own, what we call judicial administrative. So I have my own Judge Slayton Melchaz is on, court master does not have that. We were trying to do this slowly and so forth, but now we're finding that the administrative inability. It, it's just get, getting overwhelming for the court minister. So we need that administrative help. And then on the clerk's side of the office, you're having problems because we have to go without an appointed person to this position. We have different clerks filling in for different periods of time. They have to learn the new process. They have to learn the new, so forth. And that creates headaches for the court clerk side of the office. Seven, eight years ago, we actually had this position. There was a full-time juvenile master. And, and again, I'm getting fuzzy. I've been doing this for about seventeen years. Some of you from the Fernley area might have remembered Judge Lehman. Judge Lehman was a full-time juvenile master. Judge Lehman had a full-time administrative secretary Debbie DePauli. Over time, Judge Rogers, Judge Estes, we were able to whittle that back. The pendulum was a little different ten, fifteen years ago. The, the philosophy was use juvenile probation, identify the kids that are only going to be there the one time, keep them out of the system. We started doing that. Then the philosophy was have the school go back to doing more discipline and so forth. We're doing that. We're still doing, but however, the numbers, you know, your school numbers are up. Uh, and we're seeing, um, so even with getting the kids out of the system, keeping them out of the system, we're just seeing so many numbers and we just don't see the trends becoming forefront anytime soon. So to answer any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you. And thank you for being here, Judge. We appreciate your time for sure. I, I truly believe without accountability, behavior will not change. So just kind of where I stand from. But in other counties or other areas, are there other alternatives or steps such as a citation or something set by JPO or something that they can do? It's kind of an intermediate step to, that could be added before the courts are involved while holding the juveniles and their families accountable. I mean, do they have discretion to offer that to families and if families?
Yeah, no, we're already doing.
Okay.
All right. So typically what happens, and again, it was a change in philosophy from twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, the philosophy was put them all into the system, shock them, shock and awe everyone. And then we found out that really doesn't work. You have a whole bunch of kids, they'll screw up once. You have a juvenile probation officer, sit them down with the families. This can't happen again. And eighty percent of those kids, we don't see again. And so that's the, the philosophy that we've been doing. Juvenile probation is doing, we call them deferred prosecution agreements. The DA's office has been really helpful with that. They'll give input to juvenile probation. This is a kid we're not likely to see again. They'll do minor sanctions, apology letter, restitution. You know, if a kid broke a window or something like that, doesn't mean you necessarily drag them through the court process. Pay the window, apologize. And that's working. But it's just gotten to the point where our numbers are just so far up there, even diverting the kids in that manner. We're still seeing increased numbers. Some of the stuff we're seeing, TikTok videos where kids are at school planning to beat someone up. Those are the types of cases that we're seeing more of where, you know, not only are they not geniuses, but it's more vicious. We're seeing a lot of batteries. We're seeing a lot of more thefts. And those are the ones where you can't really do the deferred process and.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. And then I just have a question for Mr. Foley when we're done, but, but again, I appreciate your time and, and I do appreciate that we're holding the kids accountable for sure.
Commissioner Keller.
Thank you, Judge. What would have really helped me out because you've given me a bunch of information, trends and statistics and stuff, and I don't have any of that in front of me to, to kind of look at. And I would love to, if you, if you come before us, again, I'd love to have some stuff so that someone with my brain capacity could kind of look at it a little bit more because half of what you said, I won't remember by the time I drive home. So if I could get that in the, in the future, it'd be very helpful.
Summary, there's a bunch more kids that are causing problems.
Well, there's.
I know, I know what you're getting. I'm just.
Wait a second. The, the students at, at Fernley, we just got that report yesterday. They only have, I think, thirty new students this year with all the building and everything else, but no students.
Yeah. Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judge, thank you for being here. I understand the need. I'm just worried about the money. You know, I mean, because if, if, if we approve this, we're going to be under eighteen thousand dollars left in contingency for eight and a half months. So I'm, I'm struggling with that, but so Mr. Foley has to say.
I'll, I'll leave that to him. I, I, again, we, we focus on our budget and our staff and I, I understand.
I, I understand.
So any further questions for the guys? We'll turn it over to Mr. Foley, the money man. Josh Foley, Lion County Controller, I'm here to answer your questions.
I'm sure my question, Chairman Hocken is with us on everybody's mind as far as where we'll sit with contingency after this. And if just a recommendation of maybe putting this off to the next budget cycle or what, what is your recommendation from Bean counter type position? I understand the judge's needs. I understand the school's needs. I understand parents need help with some of their kids. I, I get all that. I mean, the, the, the reach is far and wide here. But where are we at?
Josh Foley, Lion County Council for the record. So as Commissioner Henderson pointed out, we're down to under twenty thousand dollars in contingency. After this, however, there are a couple of items that we'll be bringing forth to you in the next couple of agendas. Probably next agenda, maybe the one after, we'll see time wise how it works out. Where we need to finalize our ARPA funds. And my recommendation to the board is that we take a look at some of the funds that for projects, the projects are done. We didn't spend all of them. Um, or projects are not done like the, the Fernley Justice Court, which we have on our agenda right now. And I think we're going to have a little bit available where we can use those to take some of the items that we've have listed in contingencies, such as the sheriff's vehicles that carried over from year to year. Um, animal services vehicles that carried over from year to year and recommend to the board that we use that ARPA funding instead of contingency funding to get us where we need to be as revenues are declining on us. That helps us out. So the judges in my tenure here, very rarely do you see them come in the middle of the supply. They can think of a handful of times in twenty years that they can, they come in. They've been very good partners, very good to work with. So they usually don't come in unless they really need someone to try and lead it on. And so when they're asking, I usually have that thought process in the background as well. So I think you have enough to, to allocate that, do some future agenda items. We can get there. There are one or two other things that I can bring up that we can look at in future agenda items to, to help us out.
Chairman Hocken, with that, if the, I mean, I want to, I, I appreciate the judge and, and I agree. I've been here now almost four years and I don't know if I've seen them once. So I want to help out and I want to do this, but rather than my take is rather than approving now, we come back with that, just being fiscally responsible. Come back when we have a detailed plan on where that money is coming from rather than just straight out of contingency is, and that's just my personal belief.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, that was my exactly what he said is that I'd rather it came back. It would give us a, a month if the judge could hang on for a month for us to, to bring it back. That's what I'd like to do.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. What other ways do we have besides maybe reshuffling some ARPA money around? What other ways do we have to increase our contingency fund?
Okay, I'm, I'm, oh, wait, I'm sorry. I missed that last part that you said, Commissioner.
To, to, to supplement our contingency fund. To 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 supplement our contingency fund.
Okay, so what we would do is we would identify other funding sources to take care of the some items that we have in contingency, such as the carryover. I'll give you an example, the seven hundred thousand dollars of sheriff's vehicles we had in last year's contingency that the board they didn't get res- didn't get delivered, some still undelivered, but most of them are, didn't get delivered till after June thirtieth. So we couldn't use last year, so just kept that contingency authorization. What we can do is because we didn't spend that cash and we budgeted to spend that cash last year, or anticipated a budget time, our ending fund balance uh appears at this point, and we're still in the middle of the audit process, to have that money sitting there, so we could do an augment of our beginning fund. Now that costs a little bit of money, because anytime you augment a budget in a fund that has tax rate, you have to pay a newspaper. Um, I'm cheap, if I don't have to pay anything, I don't pay it. Frugal, not cheap. My dad's cheap, I'm frugal.
It's not what I've heard.
And so that would be the other option that that I would toss out there. One would be the ARPA funding um that we take a look at what's available that we need to use up before December thirty first, or obligate before December thirty first. And the second one would be augmenting our beginning fund balance.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah. Um. I would not have voted to authorize the ten sheriff's vehicles had I known that that money was going to carry over into another fiscal year, because we had the money to pay for it last year. So I I was good with that. So we need to be cautious about that going forward when we're putting large sums of money out there for stuff that may or may not be delivered in that in the current fiscal year, because that really bothers me. Um, but I kind of agree with the other commissioner. I like to see this all put together, you know, what monies are out there, what we might could do. Because I want to get the judge's help he needs, but I have a hard time going with twenty thousand dollars in contingency in October. So I think, I think personally for me, I need more information, i- is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I'd like to see us build up the contingency first and then take care of them.
Okay, so just so the board is aware, we can put something on the next agenda item, the next agenda on ARPA funding, we're planning on doing it. The next one and the one after, that will be my recommendate, my recommendation to the board is that we authorize purchasing those vehicles out of ARPA funds, the ones that we've already bought. Um, and that, that would free up, should free up approximately eight hundred eight hundred and forty thousand dollars between seven hundred thousand sheriff's vehicles and a hundred and forty thousand and um and animal control vehicles that get delivered by juvenile vehicle. And rarely are we in the situation where we order and it doesn't come in, doesn't come in, doesn't come in. But we end up nature of the vehicle market past couple of years, it's not been fun.
Well, we we probably need to order vehicles at the start of a fiscal year and not the end.
We have been ordering earlier, but you're correct. That one, that was a challenge. I don't like it.
I I just wanted to insert a comment too. Everybody's had their chance. Um. I uh, I prefer to spend money on the kids, uh if it means we go down a little low on contingency. Uh, we're talking stuff, moving money around to buy stuff, and yet we're also talking about money to take care of kids in court. Um, I I just, I have a difficult time saying, put it off. I I I, I I think we've got a good explanation of what's happened and the fact that the numbers of these kids are growing up. I'd like to nip that in the bud as best we can by showing them that there's consequences for their bad behavior. And I think that needs to be taken care of quickly. So say I'm probably the the lone person here, but I I'm I'm for the money and doing whatever we have to do, then massage the funds to make it better later. But go ahead, Commissioner Keller. So when I first started this, I was looking at bringing everything before us, but after the conversation has moved forward, that we're going to get, it's just a matter when we're going to do something, but we're of whatever can get from the opinion of everybody, that we're going to do this, but we're just waiting to do it till a stroke of the pen or whatever is before us, but the money's there now, and we're going to backfill later. And it's going to happen, so we're just putting it off two weeks. And to me, I I I'm going to change my mind a little bit here, because I don't want to waste the judge's time anymore. If this is going to be a decision, we're going to move forward anyway. And it and it looks like we're going to have the backfill for the contingency. I'm going to just go ahead and I'd like to in my opinion, I'm going to be voting for it. Commissioner Jacobson?
Um, yeah, I didn't realize the until your last comments about the sheriff vehicles to the ARPA and obviously I trust your fiscal knowledge along with your your common sense you bring to it. Um, I would I would be willing to change that as well, but I guess I just have one more question for uh Judge Abushteris. So uh, Judge, um, do you have someone in mind or someone in house you're thinking for this position? Does it, are you going to have to open it and apply and the timeframe there as well?
Talk to the county manager, that's what's going to we probably wouldn't be able to start the position until January. Um, we're going to have to work with HR, establish the title, pay range and all that within what you already have in pivot. It's ready, okay, and then uh I believe we have to open it up internally. And then if we don't have any internal, then we have to advertise. And so with my guess, with the holidays and all this stuff, you you know, we're looking at it. But uh with the position, ideally, we would like to take someone internal. Um, and then that creates a headache for us and the clerk has to reopen and so forth, but yeah, ideally, we hope we find one of the clerks internally.
And and that, I appreciate that as well, and I understand um the hiring. Um, so I guess if we're looking at January, um I'm guessing, is it possible to have this in two weeks uh with that shuffle? And I'm not saying necessarily then, just solely out of contingency, obviously, we're pulling this from other areas to help cover that, so.
Yeah, it's a valid point. It's not cash flow wise, probably isn't going to start immediately, because you may get domino effect of a person is promoting and they backfill that position, come off the street. However, I would recommend, just so we get that process started, the board approve it now, if you're I'm inclined to present a position, and we get that, those dominoes going, we can definitely bring back the paperwork on and will be, we're planning on it anyways, on the ARPA funds at the next meeting, possibly the meeting afterward. We're waiting on one additional quote, I believe, to to bring forward, because we want the board to have a good idea of of needs that the county has at the time we bring this forward.
Commissioner, I'm going to go with Commissioner.
So if we approve this now, there will be enough lag time for us to sort of backfill contingency before the funds are ever paid out. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I will mark that as accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ballpark figure, how much unspent ARPA do we have?
So that's a moving target, which I'm trying to get closer. I'm thinking we have approximately I'm going to go with about eight hundred and fifty thousand at the moment that we're looking at, and the reason for that, just so you know, one of the big pieces of the puzzle that has fallen into place is on your agenda today for the Fernley Justice Court. The estimate was approximately seven million dollars for the total project. What my best guesstimate right now would be is about six point three million dollars for the project. And that's because we got a low bid that's significantly lower than the others. My concern is uh sometimes you get contractors that low bid and you end up with a lot of change orders.
My favorite words.
And so I I don't know where that that will play out, because that happens at times. Um, just depends luck of the draw and what you get on the low bid. And that's one of the challenges with going through a little bit system. Um, that we're required to do, understand that all at times.
I I I certainly share your concern with change orders. Um, but so approximately about eight hundred and fifty K.
That would be my guess, best estimate, we'll we'll bring back in a week or
Make a nice community center.
What's that?
Make a nice community center.
We can't get it done in that time, unfortunately. Have to have it obligated into it.
So if we're not going to do this till January, the actual funding, does that change your your sixty nine thousand?
They would drop that down by probably a a third.
Which that's considerable. Anything further?
I'm good.
Okay. No further questions from commissioners? What about uh public input? Seeing nothing, uh I will it sounds like we might have a motion that we could use here. Could I have a motion on seventeen B? Where's the piece of paper?
Um, Chairman Hockenay, I'll take a stab. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve adding um new senior district court clerk position at an estimated annual cost of ninety two thousand with uh prorated fiscal year funding of sixty nine thousand to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, okay. I was about to do it, but uh uh second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero.
Only because of Josh.
Mr. Foley, I think that motion approval was probably based just as much on your expertise, so thank you.
Alright, then we are going to go back to fourteen A. We are at eleven oh eight, moving along. Uh, human services for possible action, approve contract between Lion County and Social Entrepreneurs Incorporated SEI to assist Lion County Human Services in developing its next five-year strategic plan in the amount of fifty five thousand four hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty cents. Have any report on that? If not, we'll move right on here. Uh, any commissioners have a question on fourteen A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we going to get a presentation?
Doesn't look like it.
Um, I, this is uh Dr. Shala Holmes, Director of Human Services for the record. I am on, but I'm off site, so I'm going to stay off of cameras, that way you guys can continue to hear me and not have me drop out. Um, if you would like me to provide some explanation regarding this item, I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
Alright, well, um, a strategic plan ensures that Human Services has a well-informed data-driven plan for the department. Uh, this is a five-year plan, so it'd be for the next five years. This would be the department's third five-year strategic plan, and I can tell you that we use this document. It is a critical tool that is used to become more efficient and enhance the department both internally and externally. This contract includes a thorough community needs assessment. These assessments are vital to understanding the involving needs of the residents and ensuring that services are aligned with community priorities. Also, a community needs assessment is required for a few of our funding sources. The last one was done in twenty nineteen, so quite a bit has changed since twenty nineteen. Uh, we've been through a pandemic together and um some things have shifted, so you can find that twenty nineteen document. Um, it is our uh community conditions report available on the Lion County website, so we do make that publicly available, so that way all of our partners throughout the county can go to it and find data to ensure that we're all working together towards the same um filling the same gaps. Nonetheless, a strong strategic plan will provide clear direction for the future, enabling the department to serve our citizens more effectively. Um, with that, I'm open for any questions.
Questions, uh Commissioner Hendricks?
Did, did you say that this is actually required um to maintain some of your funding?
Uh, absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. How come we can't do this in-house instead of having to spend fifty five thousand dollars on a consultant?
Strategic planning is a very nuanced um processed, and I don't have the staffing to be able to do a full community needs assessment. We've certainly attempted that, so we do one every three years. Um, so halfway through this, we will do an in-house one, but I can tell you, we are not able to produce the same level of data and the same level of outcome that we get when we contract out with a company who does this as a, as their profession. This is what they do. Um, so we're able to actually get better bang for our buck as opposed to me committing um an FTE who who doesn't do this, who's not trained to do this, um and attempting to figure that out.
Yeah, because in in looking through the proposal, it looks like they're going to spend their time talking to your staff and then make a plan for us. It just yeah, I'm I'm not in favor of this.
I can tell you from past experience with social entrepreneurs incorporated, they also come out and do focus groups within the community and engage the community as well, not just, not just our staff.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Keller? Any public input? Okay, seeing none, and we'll move on with uh a motion on fourteen A.
Motion to approve contract between Lion County and Social Enterprises Incorporated SEI to assist Lion County Human Services in developing its next five-year strategic plan in the amount of fifty five thousand four hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty cents.
One second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
Okay.
Can I have a comment just real quick?
Yeah, let me uh, let me go ahead and we've got uh four ayes and Commissioner Henderson is a nay. And a comment from Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
So uh Dr. Holmes, uh, this uh group that that by having a better plan, and and what I understand what you were saying, is that you have to have this done professionally to at a higher level, and that's why you use these people, so that you can get your grants?
Yes, so they do absolutely, by contracting with a professional to do this, we get a better result. A hundred and ten percent. Um. And and that does better position us for additional funding, but it is also a requirement for us to have a document of this type for several of our funding streams.
So there is a domino effect by having it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to fourteen B. For possible action, accept grant award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Aging Disability Services Division for fiscal year twenty five in the amount of eighty thousand dollars with a county match of twenty six thousand six hundred and sixty seven dollars to provide dementia care specialist services to individuals deemed eligible for the ADSD services specifications. Alright.
Again, Dr. Shala Holmes, Director of Human Services for the record. Uh, this is a pilot program. Only agencies who previously worked with the University of Nevada Reno's Dementia Engagement Education and Research Program were able to apply. Because it's a pilot, we're hopeful to find a contractor to fill this role for the duration. There is an increasing number of residents within Lion County living with dementia, and these cases are complex and difficult for our case managers to navigate. The goal of this pilot program is to have a dementia care specialist able to work with families, caregivers, and individuals living in the community with dementia, access services, and create plans to aid them with long-term stability. Data collected throughout this pilot program and others like it throughout the state will be used to advocate for long-term funding through legislation. Um, and I'm open for any questions.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockenay. Um, Dr. Holmes, uh just curiosity, going um when you, when you're in beginning uh talks with uh the folks that are going to be uh doing this as a pilot program, do they come out and say that after initial contact or seeing the living conditions, are are they willing to s- to say that or recommend that without a doubt, um, this environment is not fit to support the individual with dementia and and um what kind of, if if that happens, where does the county stand on requirements um or? do we have a, do we have um, responsibility then uh to help support in some way these folks with dementia?
To, to a degree, yes, and that is part of the complexity of these cases, so in assessment, right now, if it's one of our, our case managers who are working with families and identify that the living conditions are not ideal for the individual with dementia, um, it would be very similar to what we would expect and train this dementia care specialist to do, which one is encourage the family and or individual to voluntarily engage with um, identifying a better environment, right, a long-term care facility, um, other family members, whatever that might be, that's best for them from their perspective. So some individuals living with dementia still have the right to self-determination, and that can be very difficult to navigate, so when they are okay with their living situation, while we might find it to be um, subpar, at that point in time, we are mandatory reporters, so the best we can do is report to Adult Protective Services, which is operated through the state, and i- it's then up to them to identify what can be done outside of a voluntary um engagement type of situation. Um, for individuals that are voluntarily willing to engage with a change, we help work with them to get on the right level of Medicaid or identify what their private insurance covers or Medicare, uh, Medicare doesn't typically cover long-term care, but if they had a long-term care plan that they had already invested in, we can help them find areas, um or facilities that would accept that and help them come up with a budget, so that way they can make that transition and help them get connected to all of those services, cuz it can be overwhelming and, and a little daunting to go through that. And we are absolutely willing and able to step in and do that, that piece, and having a dementia care specialist to do that would would alleviate our existing staff a lot, um. Then, then also, the dementia care specialist ideally is gonna be an individual with experience working with folks with dementia and families and help be able to better set up those environments if it is them living in their home longer, which is always ideal, uh, there's better health outcomes, generally speaking. So if that dementia care specialist is able to successfully work with that family to enhance the environment, um, maybe make some, some changes in the home and how they do things, or bring in some additional in-home supports, um. We absolutely work to do that as well, so it's, it's, it's a, a really kinda tricky conversation, cuz it's all based off the individual and we're all so unique and different. Um, we do operate the public guardianship program, we utilize that as a last resort. Adult Protective Services can always ask the public guardian to petition if an individual has lost their ability um, and capacity to make decisions for themselves, at which point then the, the guardianship steps in and makes those decisions for them, but that's always the very last, last alternative.
Thank you.
Public input? Seeing none. Move on to a motion for fourteen B.
A move that we accept a grant award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Aging and Disability Services Division for FY twenty-five in the amount of eighty thousand dollars with a county match of twenty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars to provide dementia care specialist services to individuals deemed eligible per the ADSD service specifications.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, all right. Motion, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Fourteen C for possible action, accept grant award from the US Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for fiscal year twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand to provide mobile crisis services for youth in Lyon County and approve adding a behavioral health clinician position.
Dr. Sheila Holmes, Director of Human Services for the record. This is a community project funding that we wrote for through our senators. We're really excited to be able to get this youth mobile crisis program off the ground and implemented as community partners have been sharing the need for a program like this for several years. Um, youth mobile crisis services are crucial cuz they provide immediate on-the-ground intervention during mental health crisis for young people, which can prevent situations from escalating into more serious or harmful outcomes. The state has a mobile crisis response team for youth, it's there specifically for youth and it's been around for several years. The only problem is that they only offer a telephonic response for youth and families in Lyon County. Our goal here is to be able to work with the state's mobile crisis response team to receive referrals and be the in-person response for youth that have escalated uh within any environment within Lyon County. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yeah, I, we've, we've had two things come before us today, uh, regarding our youth and the rise in incidences, incidents that they're having. So I would just ask that you give us updates on how effective this is moving forward.
Absolutely, um, we're also really excited to share that we will be partnering with juvenile probation, so we are uh, we already partner with juvenile probation for many things to be able to aid them with families that they work with, but this program specifically will be partnering a clinician with a juvenile probation officer, so instead of having a sheriff respond to these youth, uh, JPO will be going out and responding to these youth um, as needed.
All the comment? Yeah, I was gonna ask, I thought you were gonna ask me a question.
All right.
Uh, any public input? All right, if not, then I think Commissioner Keller, you got a motion?
Move to accept a grant award from the US Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for FY twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand to provide mobile crisis services for youth in Lyon County and approve adding a behavioral health clinician position.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, I'll go on here, uh, facilities fifteen A for possible action, approve the veterans flagpole project at the Hillcrest Cemetery and allow donations to be received by the county to fund the project in the amount of five hundred dollars. Do we have any? Have anybody online here? Okay, county manager?
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, I don't see Mr. Homestead on, so if there's any questions, I can help answer, but um thank you for the description.
I, uh, just one, uh, it has a light.
I, I don't know the specifics on it, I would assume so.
Right.
Everything they have in the concrete's gonna be donated by many well instructions, so that was a big big chunk of money there, um. Flagpole, I think, was donated, but they're looking at getting a different one, but everything seems to be available.
It says that it has a light with a solar powered on, uh.
Solar powered.
Okay, I guess I missed, all right, um, that's awesome.
Yep. Anything further? Public input?
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the veterans flagpole project at the Hillcrest Cemetery and allow donations to be received uh by the county to fund this project in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Okay, I'll second that. So, motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Fifteen B for possible action, approve interlocal agreement with the city of Fernley for the Fernley Justice Court to relocate to the Fernley City Hall during the Steph, Steph, uh, Stephen Lehman justice complex remodel project and to allow the Fernley Justice Court and District Court Fernley just juvenile master court to be held at the city council chambers during the remodel. The county will pay two hundred and fifty dollars per month for the use of the space of the Fernley City Hall.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, so again, while the remodel is taking place uh at the Fernley Justice Complex, uh, or the Fernley Justice Center, um, we have to move everyone out of there, so it'll be taking place at Fernley City Hall, um, if this agreement is approved, the two hundred and fifty dollars is pretty much for utilities. They asked us to chicken for utilities since the building.
Questions?
How long do we anticipate this to be going on?
Rashaf Lee, Lyon County Councilor for the record, we anticipate the construction, the notice to proceed, assuming the board approves a future agenda item today to be uh, November fourth and for the work to be concluded somewhere end of December of twenty-five or January twenty-six, so is what we have on the thing, and the the agenda item that's upcoming does have a daily penalty if they're in the running, so gives them some incentive to go forward.
Okay. Anything further? Any public input? Seeing none, we'll do a motion on fifteen B.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Fernley, uh, for the Fernley Justice Court to relocate the Fernley City Hall uh, during the Stephen Lehman uh, justice complex remodel project and allow the Fernley Justice Court and District Court Fernley Juvenile Master Court to be held at the city council chambers during the remodel, the county will pay uh, two hundred and fifty dollars per month for the use of the space at the Fernley City Hall.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
And a big, big thank you to the city of Fernley County.
Yes.
We take five.
Take five? Okay, we'll take five minutes and we'll go till uh, eleven thirty, we'll give you eleven thirty-four, I gotta give you six.
Well, at least they got to vote for primary, not like the Democrats.
Uh, Mr. Panda, if it is engineer for the record, and I'll give an update on the UBS department capital projects for the last quarter. Um, here is a summary of all the projects, major projects going on with the department, um. The first category is under pre-design planning, we added one project in the last quarter, and uh, that was Rose Peak Water Man Replacement Project. And the other two, basically the continuation from the previous quarter. We have one project in design, which is the Highway Fifty Dayton Valley Road C O replacement project phase two that is still continuing in the design phase. We have three projects under construction, one is the rolling gear plant expansion project. Um, then the Silver Spring G I D wastewater treatment plant, there is some system improvement. And the last one is Smokey Hills Water Man Replacement Project. So next, uh, as usual, I'll give some additional details on each project and uh, happy to take some questions if you have any. Um, this is a new project, as I said, added to the list, it's a Rose Peak Water Man Replacement Project. It is the scope of the project includes about sixty-eight hundred linear foot of water man replacement uh, on Gross Avenue between Flowering Avenue and the Light Avenue with a eighteen C nine hundred PVC pipe. Um, we got a grant from EPA, which is called Community Project Funding Grant, about two point five million dollar. Um, we still have to decide the project budget as we bring a uh, consulting consultant for the project. Um, regarding the status of this project, because it's a grant-funded project, we had to go through a RFQ process to select a consultant which we just completed last month, right now uh, we are working on the scope of the project and pretty soon, I think, in the next board meeting or so, we'll bring the contract for hiring that consultant to help us with uh, three or four activities, one of them is uh help us with the grant funding agency coordination, applying for the um, uh, for the grant, um, so there are some related uh procedures, requirements we have to meet, including the National Environmental Protection Act requirements, and apply for a categorical exclusion if that applies to the project. And finally, that consultant is going to help us with the engineering side and the design and with the construction management of the project. Um, so that's basically the status of that new project we added in the last quarter.
Chairman Hock, if I could, Mr. Panda, sorry to interrupt you, sir. Um, just how did we get uh, apply, get selected for this grant? Was this with our lobbyist?
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, so yes, this is uh, funding that we applied for through um, our congressional delegation, um and received direct appropriations.
So our federal lobbyists help us with this ones, okay, I just wanted I know that we spent some money on this and this is part of that return, so I just wanted to bring that to light.
This one and then one of the human services items that the board just heard, um regarding the youth most and both of those were C P I projects.
Right on, thank you.
Uh, this is a continuation of our previous engineering study project at Silver Spring Plant. Um, scope of this project was to have multiple, uh, um uh, treatment, affluent side disposal study done by Atkins Realist and uh, board approved a contract with uh, Atkins in June. Uh, so far, they have brought uh, manufacturers representative to do the study because most of the components, they are basically manufacturer-specific, so we had to bring their rep, then basically work with them to find the right component to replace, so that study is going on right now. We also had another study for the disinfection chemical pit system, uh, what preliminary findings found that there are a lot of safety hazards involved that we need to address in the construction phase. Um, so basically, the study is going on right now. Um, hopefully, we'll get some draft findings within next couple of months. Uh, next one is regarding the Silver Spring wastewater plant sludge disposal alternative study. Um, basically, the same Atkins is studying between two options, one is if we can de-water the existing ponds or we can bring in a continuous operation facility where we can use a recent practice which involves a geosynthetic tube, basically that continuously de-watered the sludge. So basically, the alternative we are analyzing, which is the cost-effective method for us to manage the sludge from this plant. So findings from this study basically will lead us to the next phase of the project to bring either a contractor to do the de-watering of the sludge from the pond or to rebuild a facility that will continuously de-water the sludge from this facility. Next one. Um, um, yeah.
We ask questions as we're going here in these? The chairman, so the installation of the geosynthetic tube-type continuous sludge de-watering operation facility, that's a new practice for us, not a new practice.
Of the industry.
Right.
Um, I think I told in the previous meetings, we including some staff went to Douglas County who basically installed this facility, a couple of years later, they are finding it's more beneficial to operate it that way than putting a big sludge pond storing it for five to ten years and de-watering at the end, well, there are some pros and cons. Uh, cons is we have to have continuous operation, we need to start there to do the this build operations, we need some chemical storage, so there are some cons involved. So that's why we are kind of doing both life cycle cost benefit analysis through this study to find out what is the best way for us to handle that.
Right on, I, no, that's keep an open mind, I like that.
What percentage of capacity are we at right now in Silver Springs?
Um, the plant, are they, if I remember correctly, the capacity is uh, four hundred ninety-nine thousand gallons per day. We are kind of at one-third of all. So we have two-third capacity left.
Right on. No, sorry to interrupt. If I don't if I don't get it answered right away, it's gonna slip my little mind.
I think that's a great idea to have.
Thank you.
Our next project is. Our next project is. Yeah, so this, this project is in design. I think we have been talking this project for a long time, the higher fifty sure replacement project. Oh, I'd like to bring some of the key things happening and bring to board's attention, um because. We're kind of in a standstill on this project because of N dot four minutes. We kicked off this project in January, we are hoping to advertise the project last month. So ninety percent design was. As for the schedule, two months ago. We submitted for N dot permit, basically the goal of the permit was to allow us to keep that. By in ground, you say asbestos concrete pipe. Uh but end or requirement is because this is a hazardous material, we are supposed to take it out. But the construction challenges over that corridor. We basically. Once us time they declined or rejected our format, we had a meeting with them. We should, this is the only single point entry in that community. If we dig down about up to fifteen to sixteen feet deep. We don't have parking or equipment. Parking space to dig that must deep depth into that. Dayton Valley Road, we are basically going to block the entire street. Which we cannot do because of cert T fire and emergency services. So in that meeting, we basically discussed that aspect. We re-applied or for a reconsideration of that permit, I think two weeks back, we got again a rejection. So it's kind of a standstill until we get the end of permit, we cannot move anything with that.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so. If we don't get the permit and we gotta take the asbestos pipe out, how much more is that gonna increase the cost of this project?
I think that, of course, wise, I think we do not know how much it's going to be, but. It's going to be a loss, like how much we are spending in the alternate plan is going to be the same or less. But the challenge is to do the construction activity over there. Because of the road access to that community, that's basically the challenge, this cost is not the factor. So we presented that fact to the end or team. Uh, once they rejected our first permit application. Then they asked us to reapply with those facts. Engineer did an excellent job. The so in a schematic, how we are going to put the human, how we are making more traffic. So all those presentations we we applied in the second application, but. That came with another rejection.
Chairman Hock.
I just get it for the. Excuse me, sir.
No, if you're gonna, I'll, I'll say my question, you'll probably answer it.
So what we're doing is, you know, I'm working with um, um, Mr. Haskin and the N dot director to uh just have a review of that to see if we have other alternative options. Um, hopefully that, that, you know, this would uh have them reevaluate their current rejection of this. Um, if, if the answer is the same that they, we can't take this out, we do have alternative plans. Uh, to make that a bypass line and we would resubmit the application through them, so. We were trying to work with N dot to get through this, um if they stick to their guns, then uh we do have an option to submit alternative.
So, uh Chairman Hock, they think if, so when I was reading this, so. We, if we decide to go with the bypass, we leave it in the ground. Um, I don't understand how N dot can make us take out. A bit, uh. The, the, is that in their power to do that?
Uh, it, it is, I mean, they, they, they can make a policy decision, say that we can't leave abandoned asbestos concrete pipe. Uh, within their right of way, and that's their current position. So um because of these other concerns that we mentioned, we're trying to get them to reconsider that for a third time. Um, to reconsider that option, if not, then our, our, our alternative process would be then. Um, we would again leave that line in place as uh an alternate process to this other line that we're putting in. So yes, it still leaves um an asbestos concrete pipe within the right of way. With the future potential that, you know, we may use it for an alternative application.
I guess my confusion um is they approved us to put this in way back when.
Well, yeah, and what happened is this line was put in even before the highway was extended, you know, was, was within the right of way, but. Uh, very much to the outside, and then when they expanded, you know, because this was put in in the seventies, so when they expanded it, then it brings it closer. You know, to, to their position, back then they did, they didn't have these rules, you know, now they have these rules. So we, we have worked with them, I mean, this has been a point of contention with N dot for probably the past year and different groups have said different things, so we're. We're currently working with um, you know, Mr. Haskin and the N dot director to try and get some clarity on this and hopefully be able to move forward with it.
Cause I'm just guessing that if we have to pull it out and dispose of it, it's a huge change order or price tag.
Yeah, so if they, if, if we don't get, um, if we don't get approval to move forward with our current plan, our alternative plan is then to. Um, use it as a bypass line, we'll resubmit again through the process through them. Um, if their decision is that no, we can't do that, then our last option would be to remove it, yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just any, anything that has the word asbestos on it, has dollar signs collected to it and. You know, when you said, you know, an alternative, alternatives usually come with a price tag as well, so. Be interesting to see how this project proceeds.
Yeah. You said, yeah.
Yeah, so, just to provide some clarification, so the entire line is asbestos concrete, yeah. Um, and we're planning on taking out most of it, the issue is, is the section that crosses Dayton Valley Road. And because the pipe is so deep, um, having to dig that up. You, you know, we want to make sure that we maintain access to Dayton Valley Road since that is the only access to the south side of the river. So it's really about the access, not necessarily the cost of disposing the concrete or any of that, that, um, I mean. The, the access is what we're concerned about. Being that it's fifteen feet deep, but you have to dig a big hole, so. We don't want to have to dig that in the middle of the only.
And that goes on. Dayton Valley Road is N dot Road?
Um, that, that section of it, yes.
So if there, why wouldn't? Uh, so do we get funding from, will we get some funding and support for that, or?
It'll just be tied into the, the project costs. But like, uh, like Director Burkettah said, we are working with the, the director of N dot and I'm confident we'll. Be able to come up with some kind of solution, we're just waiting to hear back as they do a secondary review.
Sounds like an unfunded mandate from N dot.
It, it kind of sounds like going from department to department to department, and sometimes you have to go up to the top to. Bring in consolidation and do a little uh group talk and figure out and. What's the best for the community and everything else, and I think you'll, you'll uh get through. Uh, uh, we could always use the alternate bridge.
It, yep. So. Highlights the need, so.
Right? All right. Okie dokie.
Well, just to add few things to that, to. Jacob, comes to Jacob's question, God just end up had that authority to take it out. Well, two years back, we had a meeting with a different group from N dot. We found that there is a waiver they approved for similar situation in city of Fernley. Unfortunately, the same engineer who is now working with us for this project, they applied for the waiver of. Leaving that five in ground for city of Fernley. And that time did increase back a different group. They basically verbally approved that and they said, okay, when time comes, you guys apply with the same justification that this is a safety concern. Emergency access, we did that way, but the second group. Right now, on Android side, they are not basically accepting that fact that. In their opinion that this is a constructible. Project that you guys can do it. Our engineer basically says, no, it's difficult to do that way without completely taking out the data valuable. For at least a week or so. So that's basically the challenge, what we have been pressing on this project.
Talk about traffic, Jim.
Next one. So, this is a rolling air plant expansion project, uh, um, briefly, I'll go through the finance as we hit fifty percent of the. Schedule, um. Now, last October, we issued the notice to proceed for this construction. With a twenty three point nine million dollar estimated project cost back in twenty twenty three. Um. Uh, with a construction contract about twenty million dollar, we have spent about thirteen point three million dollar. Uh, there is a contingency fund of one point eight million. We have uh spent about three hundred thousand dollars so far. We are kind of watching very closely to keep the contract scope within the. Uh, within the scope of the project. But there are some unknowns and changes, we do approve for the benefit of the project. So, in the next page, I have some details about, about nine works and directives we have issued. Uh, with a total of four hundred thousand dollars, but. They have born only up to three hundred thousand dollars. So we still have one point four million dollar contingency. In case we face something difficulty in the project. Um. Construction progress so far is very satisfactory. But there is a challenge uh from the contractor side with regards to some of the supply components. So they are requesting a three months time delay that we are doing right now. Um, if we find that's a valid justification, we're going to approve and bring that to the board's consideration. Um, contractual completion is September two thousand twenty five, so we are kind of right now in the middle of the project. With three months delay, we approve, then the completion is going to be end of twenty twenty five. Um, this project, uh Silver Spring G I D addition system improvement. It's a very short, recent project, we basically went with the manufacturer or supplier of this components. Uh, which is Parkinson's, basically they came within a couple of weeks, they finished almost the construction. We issued a substantial completion on September seventeen. There are very minor one or two, once these items that they are working right now. Um, we also. Br- brought a change order to the board, which board approved. To extend the time from October thirty first to February twenty eighth, because uh we ordered a third blower. To, to serve as a backup to the system, uh within the approved budget. Um, next one. Uh, this is the last project, which uh is a Smokey Hills Waterman Replacement Project. Uh, this was basically the scope of building about forty seven hundred sixteen inch waterman line near the. Um, River Park or Smokey Drive. Um, financially, uh, we, we got a budget for two point three million dollar. A total of the three contracts board approved was one point eight. We have spent about eight hundred thousand, not necessarily that's the cost of the project, because. We finish the project, we are receiving all those invoices right now. Um. For the status of this project, uh we, we moved the contract construction to contractor in July. Substantial completion as per the contract is October twenty seventh. Essentially, all the constructions have been done on October first. But there are some last days cleaning and bacterial test is involved, so we are being right now. Once that is clear, and that gives the thumbs up, we can put that line into service. Contractually, we have up to November twenty six, which are very comfortable to do that by that time. That's all I got, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, thank you.
Josh Floyd, Land County Control for the record, so. A little over a year ago, these were part-time or temporary employees, the previous uh. Uh, Department Head for juvenile probation requested part-time because they're having a hard time filling them without by guaranteeing hours will get more. People to fill the positions. What we're finding out, which we suspected to start with, this temporary is actually. A better fit for the work because they may or may not have work to do, depending on how many juveniles have been assigned to work through. Um, and that, that's kind of like a wave that goes up and it goes down, and so. They came back and said, you know what, we prefer these go back to temporary employees. Doesn't cost you, actually, it's less expensive to the county because there are no. Uh, vacationer secret benefits with temporary employees, so there's no budgetary.
Sound of that. Questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve changing two work crew coordinator positions from part-time to temporary employees.
Second.
Next item is when we said we can see the possible action. Approval change order in honor of one hundred thirty five thousand three hundred forty dollars. Construction outside seats for door and electrical changes with proper ingress capital.
Josh Floyd, Land County Control for the record, this is an item that we need. Uh, to have happen for state farm market approval for operations of the court, so the ingress doesn't go through. Other than on path, doesn't go through the district court space. But because of the layout, the way the building was designed. There's a stairwell that's behind the private area for the court clerk and district court space. That's an emergency, they need to have access to. Uh, this will fix that as well as fix the sizes, some of the doors as this one before the state fire marshal. Because some of the doors have to be slightly larger. Hey, I'm not gonna speculate his why, but apparently you can get more people through them in a shorter time if the doors a little bit longer, that's a state farm marshal quarters. We do believe that there is a portion of this, if not a significant portion of this. That is due potentially to architect errors, we've had that discussion with architects. Uh, we have, they've had a discussion with their errors and emissions insurance, we are in the process and the. Architect has been fantastic to deal with, from start to finish. On all of this, we're in the process of submitting a claim to their insurance, so we're hopeful that we will get reimbursed for some of this. But to make that building functional, uh, this is an item that. That the court needs to have taken care of so that they can function.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, not really a question, just. I mean, we've been seeing engineering mistakes repeatedly, you know, to talk the other, the rib basis for once, so. Um, you know, when I first saw this, you know how much I love change orders, especially six-figure ones.
Right.
But the uh errors and emissions claim is took me somewhat of these, it's all supportive.
What happens to the, to the doors that they remove, change out, what? They get sold or they get a. Money back for it?
The problem is, it's jams and everything, and so they're gonna have to, some of those are, when you pull them out, they end up being damaged, so I don't know if there's gonna be much of a market. We can have a discussion.
Yeah, the jams are one thing, but the door itself is a different thing and the locks especially, you know, you can.
We can see what we can do on getting some, selling those in auction or something.
Think you can't return them?
What's it in the storage?
You know, personally, I can agree, but, you know, the architect's might be wonderful, if they are. Come up with correct answers for these doors, so, you know, same takes. Uh, be like this, shouldn't we, oh my gosh, doors involved. Should have been caught, we could have. Yeah, I, when I read that, that's kidding, I didn't know what the specifications would be then on that, and bottom most of them catching like.
So I can have some private conversations on that since we are in an active insurance base, I'd rather not have. Some of those discussions in public meetings. So I, I don't like it either.
Nothing else should be planned out between buildings and put out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, thanks, yeah, they, they did realize they were built a jail.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. On down and look for.
Public input and other for the motion.
I move to approve the change order in the amount of one hundred thirty five thousand thirty six dollars and ninety four cents with teleconstruction. L L C for door and electrical changes for property ingress at the district court.
Second.
Josh Foley, Land County Council for the record. So we put this out to formal bid. This is our funded. Uh we had three bidders respond. Of those three bidders lowest, uh they're all deemed to be responsive bidders. The lowest one is what's on your agenda to approve. The bids ranged all the way up to five point nine million, which you can see there's. You know, seven hundred thousand, over seven hundred thousand dollars difference between the low and the high bid. Um so. We did go through all of the schedules of work to make sure that they consider each and every piece of the project. And it appears that they would. So recommendation for you is to approve the lowest responsive bidder.
Thank you, Chairman Hock. During the engineering phase of this, was there a property line that was missed somehow?
Didn't miss it, we just didn't like it, not so.
You missed it when you built the building.
So what happened is when we went to get the permit, city of Fernley, the city of Fernley took a look at it and said, you know, the expansion that they did. Before I started the county, what I started the county where juvenile probation or the district attorney is in that building. That's built over the property line between it and the library. And so since that's over the property line, you cannot pull a permit on that property unless you fix it. So. We did a boundary line adjustment brought back to the board to move that property line slightly south. So with the entire buildings on one person, not to. So you're absolutely correct.
But that didn't cost us any money.
Yes. About, how much was it? Like twenty, over twenty thousand dollars. Yeah.
I just don't remember doing that part of it, but all right, I'm just curious.
That was all county property back before the city became city, right? And so that was the word, the county did it to the county.
Sounds like that would be an accurate statement.
So way back when, when we didn't make it one property. We dev- we, the county in the property line there.
Yeah, the property, there were two separate parcels and the county just built over them. And apparently the community development department back then. Didn't notice or didn't care. And it might predate the community development.
Right.
It happened a long time.
Um Chairman Hock, today make a motion uh that we award the firmly justice court expansion to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Raymond Brothers Construction Incorporated and approve the associated contract for five million two hundred forty two thousand one hundred nineteen dollars. And authorize the county manager to sign change orders up to five percent. Of the contract price.
Second.
Andrew Haskin, Land County Manager. So I don't really have a formal presentation on this item. Um the. That the citizen advisory board handbook was included in um in your packet as well as the bylaws. And so I'm just kind of looking for the board's input as to. What changes, if any, need to be made as a part of this update. Um obviously, we're not approving those changes today. This is just provide direction that I would draft something and bring it back to the board at a future meeting.
Um I just. As the king of past the buck, I guess, maybe, I don't know. But if it meets with Aaron's approval, because she runs interference on a lot of stuff. I'm going to be good with it because I'm afraid she's going to throw something at me if I approve something that doesn't. Uh assist her to make sure that she helps us um stay out of trouble with our advisory boards.
So so when you have something come through planning, there's a checklist that you have to walk through. And you make sure things crossed off. There's nothing for an advisory board to basically have a checklist. So I would like to see that when they're doing a planning project. So some of the stuff that they should be asking questions about, like drainage, like uh. Roads, everything, you know, just a, just a basic checklist so that they can ask those questions. And I would like them to get away from the approve or disapprove of things because. I sat on advisory board for many years and the biggest confrontation I had was voting for something or against something as a non-elected official. Appointed and having my community pissed off at me because of the way I I. I ruled and I wasn't elected, so I wasn't held accountable. So what I'd really like to see is where they came up with pros and cons, looked at a project and and passed those pros and cons on to us. You know what I'm saying? To give us the information. So they're there to ask the right questions, to to move things on if they have an. Opinions, I I, you know, I I want the information. That's the, what I I would want the most of. And I was going on uh also on the minutes meetings, meeting minutes. And there's a section in there says the minutes belong to the cab and not open for public comment from the audience. But I would, it says, uh. Men should reflect what happened at the meeting. I think that an added phrase of not what was said. Because it isn't a he said, she said, it's just what actions were taken, right? So they don't have to, they don't, they don't have to sit there and write down what everybody says. So I just want that in there for clarification for the board to know that. And uh. Also on the minutes, the the proper way to ask for minutes. At a, at advisory board, I would say would be, in my opinion, some Robert's rules. Uh are there any corrections to the minutes? It's not a, you're not asking if there's stuff that needs to be added or anything else. There's a document that they made. Uh so it's just corrections. When you ask it that way, that means that if somebody isn't there the day that the. That meetings say they're absent and now somebody else is in there. I hear too many times people say, well, I can't vote on that. I wasn't, I wasn't here. No, you're voting on whether there's a document provided before you. That you're not voting on the content. Okay, because when you ask for corrections, if you weren't there, you're not supplying any corrections. And you're providing a document. So and they can be changed down the, in the future if something was wrong. So they should always be approving their minutes. I mean, they shouldn't be abstaining. That's what I was getting at. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um I'm gonna go a little different direction at at this because the reason I asked for this is. All the cabs are doing different things, you know, some things, some of them are doing. Maybe things we don't want to do it. And so anyway, so. Cause our our cabs were created under N R S two forty four, nineteen forty five. And I think that needs to be clear, like, because they are not a town board. They are not a elected town board. Those are both under uh N R S two sixty nine. It tells you about the meetings and stuff, but. I think this board needs to come out to express to the cabs what we want them to do. You know, I I think the um. Yeah, I I think this document should start with a, with a purpose statement. You know, why, why are we having a cap? It kind of does that, but doesn't, it's it's not, you know, that that the safe um. A purpose statement and then some of the things going through the, through the handbook, you know. Under best practices, email agendas the day before required posting day by one P M. To who? And how did their agendas get created anyway? Is there a central point here that the agendas come through and get approval before? They are posted and if not, there needs to be and that needs to be um documented.
So and that is definitely one of the changes that I would recommend to the board is that that basically all the agendas come. To the clerk's email address, but then they're approved by me before they get posted. Um so we have that. There's some, some language in there, but it's not entirely clear.
Right.
And so I think cleaning some of that up, I think would be really helpful. Um occasionally, there's an item that gets put on an agenda that. Because we don't have that formal approval process, so currently, um well, I I have started reviewing them, but because that's not. But that hasn't been past practice. There was items that got got put on there that maybe weren't appropriate for.
Yeah, that's what I think we need to formalize that in here. And then um. Yeah, there's, I can go through this page by page. I'll be happy to sit down, you know, anytime. One, one thing that's neat or or in the, in the handbook says there can only be one meeting scheduled at a time, but yet we have cabs meeting at the same time. You know, so that's something and then. You know, someone else says a lot, a lot of this is just wordsmithy. But I think what I really was trying to get to was, you know, the process. I I don't think we have a well. Delineated process, you know? So uh that, that, that's my point. So I'd be happy to work any, any way you guys want to do it. I mean, I'm running out of time, but that's okay.
One of the things that I thought we should clarify in it is that they're there to advise. Us, not advise the public, especially during. Political election years, they've had, been having these candidate nights and stuff, and I don't want to see our advisory boards trying to advise the public on who they should vote for and that kind of thing.
Yeah, they should not be doing political, any kind of political events like that.
Well, we've always had it where we've had it uh on agendas in the past where people running for office had time on the agenda to speak for themselves. Would so there's any, anything that's happening in the community, you could put it on there. Uh if you're having, the Chamber of Commerce has something to talk about. That type of stuff. So there is political there, but not as the board function, right?
Public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might.
Yep.
That and that would be where I would think the appropriate, appropriate section for that is because, I mean, if you can think about the cabs, it's kind of a most the. I want to say an extension of the Board of County Commissioners, but it's not, right? But you know, we wouldn't hold a candidate. Function here, I mean, the same rule should.
Well, we're going back in the history of it. We used to have advisory boards and then they got removed all at once. By the commission and changed to advisory council so that they, because the boards were doing stuff that. They weren't, but they were also elected as an advisory board. You can be elected and then yours responsible to your community was the voice of the community. Now they're the voice, they're, they're informing us. And sometimes the community gets that mixed up a little bit of what, what their. Process is, but it hasn't been that long, but. There used to be boards.
Oh, uh thank you, Mister Chair. Yeah, like, like I said, I think what the ultimate goal is is to. Define what you want an advisory board to be and put sideboards up so that they understand that this is your role. This is what we want you to do. Um. I I did have another comment and it went. But. Yeah, oh, I know what it was, you know, like, like we said, these are not town boards. These are advisory boards, but the stagecoach building has a big sign out front that says town board meets every first meeting. We need to kind of change that.
Sure, absolutely.
I would be against changing that. I fought to save the Silver Springs Advisory Board S S A B. Because, because we didn't want to be the Silver Springs. Cab that would, would have spelled scab. And we didn't want to be scab, so we wanted to keep that. So the commission let us keep our name.
But it's not a town board.
Yeah, and I think the, the, the best word to say that the, the advisory boards used to be the voice of the. You know, the voice of the people. Now we're, now the councils are just a conduit to the, to the commission. And I think that has to be, it, it's not the voice, it's conduit.
Um I'd just say that I read through every, everything. I do have a lot of typos in right here. So I'll sit down. Yeah. Corrections, they're like down. One thing that I looked at here is what happened, Article seven is to make officers the first from January. Okay. I mean, the meetings don't meet. So I was looking at something for first meeting of the new year. I'm saying it's January, I know. Smith Valley Board didn't mean, so it's February. Well, we missed our.
Yes.
We just start trying to vote for officers, I guess. And it's like, no, just go ahead. Yeah, that's the first meetings in February. That would be probably one of the simple things that I saw.
We, we may be, they may be required to have a first meeting in January and the, and the reason is because of the terms they do expire. So. Um you kind of have to meet to discuss who's going to be the chair. Sure. We can, uh, we'll take a look at that.
Good. And just.
Yeah.
Ju- 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 just one more thing. You know, some of our advisory boards are. Dual meetings, virtual and in person. I would like to see them all be the same way. Now, I know we have a problem with internet connectivity some places, but. Yeah, if we, if we have one, to me, that's, you know, you, you go in person or you can zoom in and we don't offer that for the rest of them. Is that? Are we on a fine line there?
No, I don't. There's no requirement there, but um I mean, we can, we can handle that however the board wants. I I don't. You know, I T wise, there's not facilities in every.
Right.
Every community that handles would be.
Yeah.
Um there would be a significant cost there. Do that. So I mean, if, if you're saying you want to treat them all the same, we can do that, but then we would have, I think Dayton is the only one currently.
Yes, they're the only ones.
Uh we would have to essentially not do that.
Yes, I don't know, some, some look into. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I have a favor of not letting them zoom. It's just, you know, kind of. Need to give that option to everybody if we can reasonably.
Like, like I said, it comes down to kind of an I T issue. So we, and part of the, part of the challenge, so we ran into this with, with Smith Valley. I think they had to cancel a couple of meetings, right? Because there was an issue with the, with the Zoom. Uh there was a donation made to. To get TV and a, a setup down there and I believe, or maybe we never, maybe we never got that far. Okay. All right. No, no, it, it. So I'm, I'm misre- misremembering that.
Remember though, Chairman Hockaday.
I, I thought there was an issue with the internet and that was, that was.
There was.
Yeah.
Because they were hitting it from the library to signal with it worked very well. So there's a lot of.
And and you know, just so everyone's aware, I mean, they, they, those meetings, they have to follow open meeting law too. They, they function very much like ours. So if. We've agendized it so that it will be available via Zoom and then something happens, either the link's wrong or there, there's no internet that day or something. You can't have that meeting. Uh and so um it does add a layer of complexity there. We. I'm not opposed to, you know, trying to figure something out, but there would be significant costs and we just don't have that set up currently.
I I just looking and there's something else that I remember was kind of awkward at some of the advisory boards is when they go to seat their board. They don't know how to seat a board. And so I think it should be, it's written out, appoint board chairman, vice chairman secretary. It should be three action items. Uh do, do the, the board chair first and then the vice chair and then the secretary. And I'd like to know how, I mean, I'm all up for anything, but what we can put in to encourage people to be the secretaries. Cause that is the worst. I mean, no one wants that job and they're all willing to be on the board, but maybe during the application, will you? You know, processes are. you know, processes are checkmarked where it says, will you be? Will you take on the role if you're elected as secretary or? Because I, if they're not willing to do that, I don't want to put them on the board in the first place.
We can modify the form and include that. I think that's a great idea.
They, they said they would. Okay. Well, then, and, and not just chair, I mean, secretary, but if, if you're nominated and elected to any of those, will you do it?
I have something else. I think on the, in the handbook, it said that you have to be registered to vote. But that's not one of the questions. It's on the application.
I seem to remember that came up once before and I, I need to do some checking with the district attorneys. That particular piece, that might be an outdated piece in the.
Okay. Well, either way, it just needs to be consistent.
Yeah, because, because we took out the check the box as we were required to.
Yeah.
About criminal past.
That might be some outdated language that we have to Anything else? I forgot I was up again. Trying to sneak off.
That, that's okay.
Andrew Haskin, Line County Manager. So I'm just looking to see if the board has any comments that, that would like to be, you would like me to submit on behalf of the county. They asked for comments back by the end of November, so.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I think we need to put this aside. We have our meeting on to, to determine our, our transportation position statement. I think these two go hand in glove.
Okay. I don't believe the agenda's come out for the other one yet, so we'll, we can add it.
This is thirty-first, right?
Correct, yeah.
I know. Do we need a motion for that or?
Not for our workshop.
Yeah, I, I can.
We tell them what to do all the time. Okay. I think I'm done with the general request.
You'll take a minute. I have none to stem.
My name is Russ Wright. I still live in Dayton. And it has nothing to do with anything on the agenda. It has to do with things that are no longer available. We used to have a commissioner that came and provided freshly baked cookies for the staff. And if the staff didn't eat them, they were available to the public. And I noticed that since he's no longer seeking office, he stopped bringing cookies. So some of you that are seeking office, I would like to step up and fill these shoes with cookies to the staff, which they don't completely eat. So there's some available to me.
Mr. Wright, I don't have a stove in my house right now. Is we're doing a remodel kitchen. I will take care of you though. Before the end of my term, you will get cookies. Maybe even a cheesecake if you like. Never thought I'd get called out for.